Keep moving on. The issue is that the actual video has no sound, so it's not recording with sound. I didn't know if we wanted to take a recess and wait for Mark to fix that, or if we wanted to continue on because our reading up here, the equipment is reading for the minutes.
I think we should give an opportunity to fix it. Five minutes isn't gonna hurt nothing.
Okay. All right, well, are we good for like five minute recess? Or until he's done?
Somebody just texted me and said the sound is on.
Oh, is it on now?
That's what I'm hearing.
It's on? Oh, then we don't have to. Okay, great. Now we'll move over to the transfer and appropriation agenda.
Sir, negative three thousand one thirty-nine, one oh one, correctional officer, negative four thousand one hundred thirty. One correctional officer, negative two thousand three hundred thirty. One twenty-three, one oh one, correctional officer, negative five thousand three hundred seventy-four. One thirty, one oh one, correctional officer, negative two thousand seven hundred thirty. One hundred, one oh one, captain, negative one thousand forty-three. One oh-two, one oh one, lieutenant, negative one thousand nine hundred ninety-nine. One oh-four sergeant, negative one thousand six hundred seven. One oh-eight, one oh one corporal, negative one thousand seven hundred eighty-three. One fourteen, one oh one, correctional officer, negative three thousand one hundred fifteen. One twenty-five, one oh one, correctional officer, positive three hundred and four. One twenty-seven, one oh one, correctional officer, positive one thousand three hundred forty-eight. One forty-three, one oh one, correctional officer, positive two fifty-one. One fifty, one oh one, correctional officer, positive ten. One twenty-six overtime, positive two, twenty-five thousand eight. One nineteen holiday pay, positive four thousand five hundred ninety-two, with a total of zero.
I will make the motion to approve.
I will second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. Do we have any questions? It's mostly just moving excess salary around.
Yeah, how long will this overtime transfer last you?
That's a good question, but honestly, I'm hoping we don't have to come back and ask for it to move again. I always hate saying this, we are only short one person. So, in the jail, that's fantastic. But we shouldn't have the overtime like what we had had.
Thank you. How many openings do we have?
For the jail, one.
One?
One.
So these are all from earlier on in the year?
Yes. I do this typically right now, and then I may do it again. If we look like we're gonna be running short, I'll run the lines all over again, make sure there's enough there. If there's excess, I'll move it to overtime, but knock on wood, I think we're gonna be fine.
Just for the record, if anybody's not familiar with what we're talking about, these are positions that were budgeted for. The employees weren't hired, or they were open for whatever reason, so that money wasn't spent. So she's transferring that money to be spent for overtime. So that's what that is, and the next couple readings that we're gonna go over. It may sound just like numbers, but that's what it is.
Any further questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Cantz?
Yes.
Mr. Mokel?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes. Just a reminder, or I guess a note, everything in the transfer section was favorable with the finance committee.
Sheriff, one twenty-nine, salaries and wages. One forty-three, one oh one deputy, negative fifteen thousand three hundred ninety. One fifty-two, one oh one deputy, negative one thousand five hundred. One forty-two, one oh one deputy, negative twelve thousand seven hundred eighty-one. One thirty-eight, one oh one deputy, negative twelve thousand three hundred twenty-three. One thirty-three, one oh one deputy, negative one thousand one hundred. One twenty-nine, one oh one deputy, negative five thousand seven hundred fifty-four. One twenty-three, one oh one deputy, negative seven hundred eighty. One twenty-one, one oh one sergeant, negative seven hundred forty-six. One eighteen, one oh one corporal, negative twelve thousand three hundred eighty-four. One seventeen, one oh one corporal, negative thirteen thousand eight forty-eight. One thirteen, one oh one captain, negative eight thousand nine hundred forty-nine. One ten, one oh one sergeant, negative five thousand three hundred seventy-three. One oh-nine, one oh one lieutenant, negative fifteen thousand two hundred thirteen. One fourteen, one oh one corporal, positive two thousand three hundred fifty-five. One nineteen, one oh one sergeant, positive two hundred fifty-five. One twenty-two, one oh one corporal, positive two thousand four hundred thirty-two. One twenty-six overtime, seventy-six thousand six hundred and six. One nineteen holiday pay, twenty-four thousand four hundred ninety-three, with a total of zero.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. This is more of the same, just taking excess salaries and moving it to overtime and holiday pay. Do we have any questions?
Quick question.
Yep.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna ask the same question for the sheriff's department. How many openings do we have?
One. People who were promoted obviously had less time than the people who had left. That's why there was excess on their salaries.
Hundred and twenty, wait, I think we budgeted a hundred and twenty-five thousand for overtime for sheriff's department, so where are you?
I don't anticipate using this, all of this, honestly. It's just I'd rather have it there and not have to scramble in the end if we do for some ungodly reason.
You don't know what you've used to date?
I think we're right on track. Are we supposed to be at like fifty-six percent or fifty-eight percent, something like that? We're right on track. But we also have the main holidays and the main things coming up too, so... I would rather have it there and not need it, and then it just goes back to the general fund than we have to try to move it in a rush.
Any additional questions?
Educate me again, if you would please, on where all this overtime is coming in.
What do you mean?
What's causing it?
Well, we have been short. We may be at full staff right now, but of the deputies that we have hired, four of them didn't have the academy. So they all had to go to the academy. They're still being paid. That left the shifts short, which meant we would have to have overtime in order to keep all the minimum staffing on the road for the deputies. So as they're coming back out of the academy, even though they're finished, they still can't work on their own because they have to finish their field training.
Who sets the minimum staffing? How does that work?
I believe the sheriff does that.
I think you said the academy is like twenty weeks.
Yes. If we had lateral transfers, that was one thing, but these last ones that have been hired were not laterals. They're all brand-new people who've not been to the academy before or been deputies, so...
So just as of July thirty-first, the year-to-day expense was ninety-seven thousand two hundred twenty-nine out of the hundred and twenty-five grand, so seventy-seven percent as of middle of the year.
Okay. But again, that should start slowing back down.
Right.
Now that they're coming back out. We just got two out of the academy. Two more, however, did just leave, and we still have one more to go. We're still leaving us with one opening.
Why are they leaving? Leaving to go to the academy?
Going to the academy. We just got two people back from the academy, and we had two more that just left on Monday. So they left for the academy and will be gone for the twenty weeks. And then we still have one more that was just hired. He's not had the academy yet either, but he'll have to wait till the next session, which is December, January, when the next one would start.
What is your turnover rate?
I mean, I can't really, I don't...
I mean, I know the jail has a higher turnover rate, correct?
Correct.
And so deputies in the field, turnover rate?
During the last year, we've had several.
Several meaning?
Probably twelve, ten, twelve.
At budget time, could you let me know a little closer number of that, please? Thank you.
You just want for the year, or you want for...
Yeah, year, it'd be fine.
The year, okay.
And then for overtime for the jail, you're at sixty-three percent as of July thirty-first, so of two hundred fifty-five thousand, one hundred sixty-nine, seventy-two.
Yeah, they're actually in better shape. They've been doing much better.
Yeah.
When you do that, actually bring the year before as well. I want to see what comparison is versus the previous year before we made the salary adjustments. We made significant salary adjustments. I want to see what kind of impact that's having on retention.
Last year, they didn't get anything.
There's a year prior.
So it'd be, you probably want me to go back.
Twenty-two.
Yeah.
They're just a three-year period.
Yeah, I can do that. How many we lost each year?
I mean, I can tell you only got one position, but actually it's going, but you were usually here every month with three positions.
Yeah, I do appreciate that, not having to come here all the time. I'm not the guy, but I like not seeing you too.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Cantz?
Yes.
Mr. Mokel?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Just to clarify, you just want that for the sheriff's office itself, or you want it in the jail?
Jail.
Let's do both, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Next is assessor, one thirty-four, under salaries and wages. One oh-four, one oh one, personal mobile home, negative three thousand. To office supplies, two twenty-one, positive three thousand, for a total of zero.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. This is for a more accommodating desk for your employee who has to read large plaques.
Yep.
Do we have any additional questions?
I do.
Okay.
Mr. Carmichael, could you elaborate on the, just kind of refresh my memory on the personal mobile home? The money where you're pulling it from?
Personal mobile home, we have a James Carmichael County Assessor. Have a gap, had a gap in employment in there. Approximately a month or a little over a month, so we're taking that money. And personal property is business personal property that businesses turn in every year. And mobile homes are assessed January first of every given year. That was just that, that person's job description.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Cantz?
Yes.
Mr. Mokel?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Treasurer, one twenty-seven. Printing, three thirty-one, negative two thousand five hundred. Five thirty-six equipment, positive two thousand five hundred, for a total of zero.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. This is part of your computer replacement program that you'd like to have done before the November tax collection?
Yes, yeah. I have right now currently enough for, to replace one computer for the cashiers, but I need to replace three. So we found a little bit of money in the printing and advertising, and I like to switch that to equipment so we can purchase two additional computers for the cashiers. Right now, they're running on Windows ten, so obviously those are really old ones. My plan is to try to replace three to four, depending on the year, every year. And then the fifth year, replacing laptops, that would take care of my entire office. So every computer would be replaced every five years. That way, we don't have any malfunctions and things like that.
Just to be clear, you're buying those computers, do you guys purchase them directly?
We go through RIT, and they purchase them for us and install them and everything. They do all the, if they need software, they load all the software on there.
That was actually gonna be my question. Do you guys coordinate this with Jim?
Yes, yes.
I know he's kind of partial to desktops, for some reason, but...
They have a longer life than a laptop.
They do, yeah.
That's why.
So, would this square you up, Brad? Do you don't have any computers, or do you still have some?
We should be done for the year, yeah. This would be our... We had one earlier this year that we replaced, and then we had two printers that were up front with the cashiers. They went out, so we had to replace that. That left me one short. And then from the last year's budget, it was cut. The other one was cut. So this would allow me to keep on that pace, and I'd like to do, this year it would be four computers, next year it's only three, and then four, and then three, and then the laptops.
This won't affect your printing budget for the rest of the year?
No, it will not, no.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Cantz?
Yes.
Mr. Mokel?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative Grant, ninety-one oh seven. Under supply, other supplies, two forty. Positive four thousand five hundred. Professional services, contractual services, three eleven. Negative four thousand five hundred, for a total of zero.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. Emily, I'll let you explain this one.
Sure. Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. Last month, I came and asked for appropriations for the JDAI grant. And when we got back her grant approval, all of her grant is just different programs. And when we went through it, there was actually money that needed to go in the two-hundred series that we didn't appropriate, so that's what we're doing. We're moving it back in from three-hundred to two-hundred.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Cantz?
Yes.
Mr. Mokel?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
And Ms. Piper?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the addendum.
County General Communications, one twenty-four, under salaries and wages. One eleven, one oh one, Comtech, negative eight thousand. One twenty, one oh one, Comtech, negative four thousand. One twenty-four, one oh one, Comtech, negative six thousand. One twenty-six, one oh one, Comtech, negative one thousand. One thirty-four, one oh one, Comtech, negative ten thousand. One ninety-eight, one oh one, part-time, negative ten thousand. One ninety-five holiday pay, positive fourteen thousand. One ninety-six overtime, positive thirty-five thousand. And then under communication and transportation, three fifty-eight utility services phone, negative ten thousand, for a total of zero.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. This is kind of similar to the sheriff in jail moving money around to fund holiday pay and overtime. Do you have any additional questions for Fred?
Go ahead, Matt. You're at about seventy-eight percent as of July thirty-first, right?
Yeah, it's actually more than that now.
Yeah.
And there's also a second addendum as well, that we talked about at finance. So that, I told you in March I'd probably have to come back for an additional appropriation. I was able to find money, some positions that weren't filled for part of the year, so that's the second addendum. So I hopefully will not need an additional appropriation this year for overtime or holiday pay.
Any additional questions?
One more. What's your openings?
I have one opening right now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Cantz?
Yes.
Mr. Mokel?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Thank you.
Clerk, one twenty-five. Office supplies, two eleven, negative one thousand five hundred. Five thirty-six equipment, positive one thousand five hundred, for a total of zero.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. This is for, to replace a couple scanners, right? Any additional questions for the clerk?
I have a quick question. It's just like replacing them because they're, they're just outdated, they're broken.
No, they're broken.
So you gotta have.
Yeah, everybody in my office scans, of course, you know, we got files for days. And so anytime they're not busy with a customer or on the phone, they're scanning files, you know, and so these things just wear out over periods of time.
They get used up pretty quick, imagine.
Well, you know, actually, they last pretty long. Uh, it's kind of a surprise that these two went bad, but they did, so.
Thank you.
All right, roll call, please. Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Cantz?
Yes.
Mr. Mokel? Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
And Ms. Piper, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to the second addendum.
EMS, one fifty-five, under salaries and wages, one seventy-seven, one oh one, Advanced EMT, negative fifteen thousand. One eighteen, one oh one, Advanced EMT, negative sixteen thousand. One twenty-six overtime, positive thirty-one thousand for a total of zero.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. This is more of the same, moving money around from, uh, excess salaries for holiday pay and overtime. Do we have any additional questions for you, Ms.?
Quick question. How many openings do you have?
Technically, right now, none. Uh, we just hired three people, but we're still in the process, so technically none, but three. They haven't been officially, you know, they're not started yet.
Started the process.
Yes, yes, we have started.
Thank you.
So two hundred thirty-five thousand, budgeted two oh six, thirty-nine-one used, so almost ninety percent, or ninety percent.
Yeah, we've used, so I will be back definitely again next month just to clean up. I, I wanted to wait until we got these three people hired, so then I could fully evaluate where we're gonna be at based on when they start versus how much is gonna be left over. So I will be back next month to put more in to get us through.
Two hundred fifty-five thousand a year for overtime, same with the jail. Reallocating that to another body, would that make sense to you guys?
Adding headcount.
I mean, how they're struggling to fill the ones they have?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to decipher exactly what you're, what you're saying, like.
Do we avoid the overtime, as much overtime if we had additional staff?
Oh, no, because we, we pay overtime every single pay. So they get paid like time and a half overtime and they get paid halftime overtime because we do twenty-four hour shifts. So any, when they're scheduled on their tours to work, any hour that they go over forty, they automatically make an overtime rate of halftime. Um, so we are constantly, every single pay, paying out some sort of overtime. Um.
Plus this year, we had the eclipse.
Yeah.
The amount of your, we had the tornado.
Mm-hmm.
Schedule it.
Yeah, we did have the, the tornado, the eclipse, and then the, uh, we helped, um, cover for the fallen monthly firefighter. We helped cover, um, the day for them so they could do that. But we, uh, we've also had reopenings, pretty much, so we've had a lot of, a lot of overtime this year, too.
All right, thanks.
Just a point of order, introduce yourselves.
Megan Cattino, Office Manager, EMS.
Mike Ashley, Director, and I'll be back.
All right.
So another, Mike, don't go away. Uh, Matt's question was if he had another position, would that help with the overtime? Which would help more, another position or increasing the salaries for your current position?
More people.
More people?
Yeah, I sent some information to, uh, Matt about, uh, a desire to get six more people. I'd like to have nine, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I'd like to run the truck full-time at a Hamilton Township Station on North Wheeling to cover that area better. Right now, it's only if we've got the staffing to do it on a day-to-day basis, so that's something we could discuss probably outside of here.
Is that reflected in your budget request?
Not, not for this, not for this year.
Not for this year.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I guess my question would be is, if we've got openings, I mean, how would, how would hiring additional staff make the, any difference if, if we haven't filled the staff that we have? I know we just filled the three.
It's.
It's just more openings to transfer money.
Well, we would, we would have more people to not get down below our minimums.
I get it, in theory, if we can hire them, if we have openings.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if we can find them, is what I'd like to do.
On paper, it sounds great, but in reality, we've not been able to fill the one we have.
Probably thirty-some people this year. We just went through interviews again. We get six or seven each time. It's a no-call, no-show. They went to all the trouble to fill out the application and select the time to show up and they don't show up. We had a top four out of this last group, number two, everybody called her back to accept the job. So it's, we're, we're dealing with, and we're not the only ones. I mean, everybody's dealing with the fire department, police department, everybody's dealing with it, but we used to have fifty people apply from one position.
Fighting over that one spot.
And now we can't, we can't get people to show up for it, but it's not just us. I mean, it's, it's that way everywhere.
You're right, it, it.
My son's a flight medic on a, or a flight nurse on a helicopter. They can't hire paramedics to go fly on a helicopter, and everybody wants to fly on a helicopter, and they can't get people to come do that. So it's crazy.
So just to be clear, it wasn't a loaded question, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, but you know, it is a, it is a staffing analysis review that probably, you know, we've just, as we're looking at budget next week, that we're just trying to.
Yeah.
And to Mike's point, he has been, um, all of public safety has been delivering to me a three-to-five-year, um, I'll call it a wish list. Uh, it's a, you know, if, if you had the money, where, what it could spend and what would it be for? That laundry list will get sent to the auditor's office as part of a, hopefully a five-year, uh, potential projected budget plan, revenue shortfall kind of conversation that we're in the midst of trying to gather.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's something I'd like to sit down and talk about, but it just wasn't for this budget. I didn't, I did too many unknowns this year.
So it does sound to me like additional people leads to additional overtime.
Well, if you have additional people, you're not constantly sitting on your minimum manning overtime, so you have someone call in, you still have enough people on the shift to cover those trucks and make sure they operate. But if you're down to the minimum people already, because we're short.
We have to force people to work.
Yeah, and that's where your major overtime comes in, is when you have to force somebody, because then you're paying them at a time and a half rate.
More employees.
I mean, we could survive on the two thirty-five with halftime all the time, but when you're forcing a medic to work a twenty-four, you know, twelve hours, and then another one to work twelve hours unless they volunteer for the whole twenty-four, you're looking at a lot of money an hour to cover that shift.
Yeah.
More employees, new, additional employees means more additional expenses and benefits, right, so.
Yeah, but less overtime.
Right, so. So where's the balance?
Which, which like with Matt doing an, like an actual analysis will help kind of weigh. Yeah.
Pros and cons, so.
And it's more than just money, too. You're talking about coverage.
No, I, no, I totally get that, no, absolutely, and that's super critical, so. Because we lost, when the city took over EMS, I feel like we lost like fif- fifteen, a lot, ten?
Twelve.
Twelve, yes, twelve.
Twelve employees in EMS when the city took over their own EMS, so we had to cut back significantly just to work within the constraints of our new budget that we would have available, so that's kind of where that change occurred.
When nobody was using an ambulance or anything, but now that's, that's rebounding. I mean, our, uh, what do you call it, anticipated revenues come up significantly since COVID, so, and it's still, still going up, so. So hopefully we'll get that balance back again. I think we're getting closer, so.
Yappens hovering back there.
Did we vote on this already?
No.
No, we're still taking questions.
I was gonna comment, uh, Gavin Green, Delaware County Coroner. Um, one of the other things that they have with anticipated overtime is we had to transport our autopsies over to Madison County at the end of last year and the beginning of this year, which incurred at least one driver and a truck to transport. And just two weeks ago with the homicide victim that was transported and ultimately died in, uh, Marion County. Once Police Department requested that we go and get him and bring him back to the autopsy here, um, because Marion County would not autopsy it. And so that's just another thing that ultimately incurs. That was, Jake did, uh, three hours overtime that would have cost us at least five hundred dollars plus mileage if we tried to private contract that out for a transport. Um, and I get those numbers from Blackford County. Uh, Zach, uh, uses, um, a private company to transport from Blackford just a ball, and it's five hundred dollars, so it'd be a heck of a lot more, so just from all of their stuff, then intercompany requests as well, too, so.
And he's offered to pay us, but that seems kind of dumb to me since we're all.
Together, we're a team, right?
Right.
Why would we, why would we autopsy in a gunshot victim?
Uh, that's a really good question. Um, it's because, it's just that, well, uh, how do I, uh, at the request of the prosecutor's office, we want to make sure that we cover all of our bases. So with toxicology, well, if there was something else, just so it doesn't leave a hole in the defense that they would say, how do you know that they died from a gunshot? They could have had a massive heart attack and then happened to be struck by a bullet then. I know it sounds silly, um, but we're now, we were doing, um, just toxicologies when we believed it was a drug overdose. Um, the prosecutor's office, um, requested that we start doing full autopsies again, um, because we tried to say, like you just said, it's just a gunshot, and that's what Marion County's doing. They would not have done an autopsy. They would have just said, there's a gunshot wound to his head, that's what killed him, and called a day. Um, but Delaware County Prosecutor's Office believes they would like to have every single basis covered.
That seems, just seems ridiculous, because, I mean, a, a defense attorney's gonna do what a defense attorney does. He's gonna say anything. He could say he fell in the bush, he was allergic to the bush and died from allergies, but a common sense of a juror got a gunshot wound.
Yep.
I mean, I just, I get, do we just honor all the requests of the prosecutor's office?
We have to present a shadow of doubt, though, in, in.
We may not have met with the, uh, courts yet, but we did hear that from the court system also, basically that.
You're not selling me.
Uh, we do a, we, we prosecute crime in Delaware County, no two ways about it.
Yeah, Delaware, yeah. President Piper, if I may, we've drifted a little bit away from this transfer. I'd like to call for the question.
All right, roll call, please. Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Cantz?
Yes.
Mr. Mokel?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Ms. Piper, yes. Thank you.
Communications, one twenty-four, under salaries and wages, one oh nine, one oh one, Comp Tech, uh, negative twenty thousand. One ninety-five holiday pay, positive five thousand. One ninety-six overtime, positive fifteen thousand for a total of zero.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. This goes back to what Fred was discussing with us earlier. Do we have any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call, please. Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Cantz?
Yes.
Mr. Mokel?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead?
Yes.
Ms. Piper, yes. All right. Moving on to our appropriations.
May I ask a question before you read the first one, please? When you said that the Finance Committee had a favorable recommendation, did that include?
Just the transfers.
The transfers, alright, thank you.
We're gonna have lots of discussion here, I'm sure.
Okay, under County General, Public Defender, one thirty-nine, under salaries and wages, one thirteen, attorney fees, positive fifty thousand. One thirty-eight transcription fees, positive twenty thousand for a total of seventy thousand.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. I'm going to let you explain this one.
I do apologize, Eugene, I forgot to send these out to you.
Okay, I hope all of you received the, my breakdown, Sam's letter, Sam Beasley's letter, uh, Shelley Harvey, Office Administrator, Public Defender's Office. Uh, if any of you did not receive Mr. Beasley's letter or my, uh, breakdown of our expenses for these two items, um, let me, did everyone receive it? So that you have it to look at, okay. Uh, we have a problem with, uh, actually, it's not a problem, it's just a fact. The, there have been so many trials this year, uh, we have a, a lot of dealing resulting in death cases. Uh, and that's, I'd say ninety percent of what we've tried. As you can see, we've already tried more jury trials this year. And, uh, than we did the entire year of twenty twenty-three. And, uh, then that leads to more appeals, because every case, uh, that gets tried gets appealed, unless they're not guilty. Of course, we had a couple of those, but we've had eighteen appeals so far this year, and we had eighteen all of last year. So at this point, total attorney fees spent last year was a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, seven fifty. We've already spent a hundred and fourteen thousand, two, four twenty-five. So the fact is, we're trying more cases, and they're, we, they're murders and level-one cases. And that's the only thing, our attorneys get paid extra for, um, our murder and level ones. So, uh, that, I mean, it's just more, it's more. The transcripts go along with the number of cases. Uh, we, we have had twenty-two so far this year. Most of those are in preparation for the appeals. They have to type a, a court transcript of all the proceedings. These trials are long. They're three, four, five days long, and that's a long transcript costing, it could be four thousand dollars for, for us to pay for the transcript. So we, you know, we're right there, just, we're gonna run out of money. And, um, this is forty percent reimbursable, um, by the Indiana Public Defi- Defender Commission. And so, I mean, I hate asking for money, but I have, we, I've talked to Sam over and over. As you know, our, this is, um, one hundred series. Our, our general fund is, oh, ninety-nine percent salary and reimbursement in, uh, insurance per FICA. We did have one employee, an investigator position, that was vacant for six months. And I moved pretty much every penny out of that account into these, uh, attorney fees accounts, um, that I have been able to. And that's, I mean, any other funds, we're just almost to the penny to, to make it through the year. So that's where we're at.
So to be clear, as of July thirty-first, you, we budgeted a hundred and fourteen thousand roughly for the year. You've already overspent that, right?
Correct.
Um, just in attorney fees.
Correct.
I also see that, well, I'll just leave it at that for now, um.
Did you adjust your budget for twenty-five? Did you increase this line?
I did not, because this is an extreme year, obviously, where we've already tried eight of these cases. We have no idea how many cases are going to be tried to a jury the rest of the year. I mean, we just, it's something we cannot predict, and so we, I don't, I wouldn't have known what to ask for. You know, I, I could have gone up thirty thousand for, in my budget request, but you just never know. We could be sitting here at this time next year and have tried five cases. You just never know.
Tell me again, public defenders get paid for what cases?
Uh, murders and level-one cases that go over three days.
Yeah.
So it's a two-day jury trial, they do not get paid anything extra.
And Sam made a, uh, mention in here that the legislature added a new criminal offense a few years back called dealing resulting in death. You mentioned that, which is usually charged now as a level-one felony. Delaware County's had quite a few of these in the last, um, year or so.
And that's basically what we're trying. We've had a couple of child molestation cases, but basically the dealing resulting in death is, is what we're going to trial on. Um, we've won a cup, one, I think, but the plea offers are pleaded as charged or go to trial. So defendants, uh, basically don't have anything to lose, and they go to trial. With each one of these cases also, uh, there is an extensive amount of data that has to be reviewed. Um, for every one of these, you may have twenty police officers that show up and have two hours, uh, body cam where you have to review that, you know, the attorney has to review all of that. Um, in our last case, we had two hundred and some thousand, I believe, uh, texts, voicemails, you know, social media posts, and. And the attorney has to reveal, or, I'm sorry, review every single one of those texts, voicemails and social media posts because you just don't know what the prosecutor is going to use during the trial.
So Shelley, you said that for these particular cases, the attorneys get fees outside of their regular fifty thousand dollar salary, correct?
Correct.
What are the, like, if I was an attorney, hire, I'd do it in a case, wha- what kind of fee would I expect to receive?
As a public defender? It's five thousand dollars.
So this is.
If a trial goes over three days. Three days or over, I should say.
So you're expecting ten?
No, five, five flat.
Fifty thousand dollars. Am I, am I doing math wrong? You said five thousand dollars is what they receive. You're asking for fifty thousand dollars. Wouldn't that be ten more cases?
Well, the, the attorneys on these cases oftentimes have co-counsel. And not only do they need co-counsel to help go through all this data, help them go through. Uh, there are, we are also trying to get everybody in our office qualified to do murders and level-one felonies. And so often they have co-counsel. In fact, it is encouraged by the commission and encouraged by the, uh, by our chief public defender, that if you have one of these, a murder or deal, or level-one, you have co-counsel and the co-counsel also gets paid for being out of their office, sitting in trial for three days. And that fee is thirty-one hundred.
For the fifty thousand dollars, has that money been spent or is that money that you're asking for in advance?
Some of it has been spent. I'm ten thousand in the hole right now. Ten thousand, well, no, I'm ninety-one hundred in the hole right now. And then I have ten thousand one hundred waiting to be paid.
Okay, and so you indicated earlier, uh, that you had a forty thousand dollar access, if you would, uh, because you didn't have an investigator for six months?
Correct.
Okay. And now you're adding another fifty, so we're close to a hundred thousand dollars additional. And I guess my next question would be a question that we, uh, have brought up to other people, which is how much additional money are you anticipating to get you through the rest of the year?
I'm anticipating, well, no, I, I'll say I'm hoping that this can get us through the rest of the year. Because, like I said, we have no idea how many trials we're going to have. Um, I can't promise it'll get us through the rest of the year, but I, it very well may.
How do we not have any idea? Are trials scheduled out months in advance?
Oh, they are scheduled out months in advance, um, not just murders and dealing resulting in deaths. But, I mean, we had a case that was set for today, that got continued yesterday. You know, you just don't know what's going on. We have trials that you think are going to go and that attorney starts to prep for that trial weeks in advance. And then you say, okay, there's no way this can't go to trial. It, this has to go to trial because of this. And so, it goes to trial. Each, each court has, say, five jury trials set every week. And so, that's, if they have twenty-five jury trials set every week, sometimes Emily, none of them go. And none of them may go for three or four weeks. And yet, it's just, you can't predict it, Ryan. I wish I could.
This has been true forever. I mean, that's, that's the way the courts operate.
So, Emily Anderson, Court Administrator, I just want to say, we just had one today that was supposed to go and it was outside of the, defense or prosecutor's hands. I don't want to say what happened, but it was out of our hands that it got continued literally last minute. Things like this happen all the time. Um, we send venaries out, we put all the time into it and it gets continued. Uh, sixty percent of our trials that actually get issued out end up either continuing or getting canceled, or they plea. So it's a lot of work for the courts, it's a lot of work for attorneys. And it's frustrating, but it's just how it is. And the one that was supposed to go today was out of everybody's control. Um, you can't predict because she's right. We have trials stacked, um, in every courtroom, every week. And they ask counsel, are you ready to go for this one? Are you ready to go? And they go down the line. And eventually, one of them is ready to go, but we have no way to predict what's going when. So it's, it's literally just trying to predict, how has it been over the last year? As we have seen in the last couple of years, they've climbed, she's, she's climbing because we're climbing. And is it part coming back from COVID? Yes. Is it part crimes, uh, the, the filings have increased? Yes. So it's just a combination of both things that is affecting both the courts and the public defenders and obviously prosecutors' filings.
Do you have any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kance.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Says I don't want to. We'll vote yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
You.
Hit a compelling argument, Shelley.
Auditor, one twenty-six, three eleven contractual services, fifty thousand for a total of fifty thousand.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. Uh, Tanya, would you like to explain this one?
Tanya Dunsmore, Chief Deputy Auditor. We would like to reduce that down
Okay.
um, to thirty thousand. And this request just comes, uh, near the end of the year. We are, out of our hundred and forty thousand dollar budget in contractual services, we are about one twenty-seven spent, leaving around thirteen. And, um, Baker Tilly is pretty much where they're at now at the end of August is right, right around one oh seven. And that's about where we were for the year last year. However, um, after the finance meeting, we were in contact with them. We don't foresee a whole lot more coming through from them, uh, for the rest of the year, um. So this is just, so we don't run out as bills do come in. There are other things that get paid out of there, such as like, we have our, uh, software rental contract. We have, you know, there's other things besides Baker Tilly that come out of that. So we are just trying to make sure that we have money there to pay the bills the rest of the year. And, um, hoping that this amount will do it.
I have a question.
Yep.
My question is, if you, if we're kind of at the two-thirds point of the year, contractual services, it's something that's generally pretty predictable. You might have mentioned it and maybe I didn't, I didn't hear it, but why do we not have enough in, in there budgeted for the year?
Well, I can tell you, we did up the budget last year, uh, from the year before. And it was ninety-five the year before. Based on that year, we upped it to one forty. And we haven't spent it all yet, I can tell you that. Um, we're at one twenty-seven. So I'm just looking at numbers here.
Is this for Baker Tilly exclusively?
No. No. There's, um, the highways payroll, uh, pay, clock in, clock out.
Time system.
Time system, thank you. Uh, there's the, um, like I said, the software rental contract comes out of this. Um, there is Baker Tilly, Zix Corp Systems, um.
What did you mean, the, the highways time system? They're on a different time system than everybody else?
Correct.
What for?
I, that was before me. I don't know that answer. I would say it's because they have a different kind of, there, there's Carrie. She can explain it very well.
Carrie Die County Highway. So our employees clock in and out. Um, it's a physical time clock. It goes through, um, the software is where we log it and then submit everything to payroll then for the employees to get paid.
You're the only ones using it?
I'm sorry?
You guys are the only ones using it?
Yes.
Why couldn't we just, if they clock in and out and they have a time card, why couldn't you just forward that to Pam at the end of the week, like she does payroll for everything else?
Pam doesn't do our payroll.
Auditor's office.
Well, whoever does the payroll, why couldn't we do it that way? Why do we have to sub it out to somebody?
Well, we're not subbing it out to somebody. It's a software that's keeping track of each employee's clock in and clock out. And at the end of the week, or the two weeks, it's got a total on there and then that's what we submit to payroll.
I mean, I get that.
So you want me to, I'm just, as an example, you want me to go through when our guys are called in and out all winter long, are working over summer, to hand calculate? Everybody's punch in and punch out for fifty employees?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what, I mean, a lot of small businesses do the same thing.
I don't see us being a small business.
How many employees do you have?
Pardon?
How many employees in the highway department?
Um, on the highway side and the bridge side, there's fifty. Engineering has four. Engineering does not use the time clock system.
How much does this system cost us?
Uh, for the highway, I think it's around, it's like a, not sure how many times it hits a year, but it's around three thousand, I believe.
A month?
I believe it's.
I want to say it's less than ten thousand dollars a year.
Yeah. I want to say it's quarterly. Does that sound right, Carrie?
Honestly, I'm really not for sure. I know the last time I talked with Jim, I think it's been when Steve was in office. And I want to say then it was around seven, eight thousand dollars.
How often?
A year.
With all due respect, no offense to you, we've sit up here and I've, there's been, whether it be something in addition to the auditor's office or the clerk's office or whatever office it is. And a lot of the stuff that we appropriate for is to make our jobs as employees easier, right? And I just think it's, sometimes we have to consider, yeah, they can make it easier, but it's spending taxpayer money to do that. And we all do get a paycheck, right? So just because it makes it easier doesn't mean that it should be done. If we could save the money on it. And I'm, I'm just talking about yours because that's what we're on right now. I bet we could go through every department where we spend money to make the employees' jobs easier, right? But they're getting a paycheck like everybody else.
We can make it real easy and we can go on the honor system like the county building does or the justice center. I mean, we can do away with the time clock and go on the honor system.
Well, I mean, I, I used to do a time clock. It's pretty, you know, clock in, clock out, look at the difference of the time. It's usually off to the side anyway, um.
Well, sometimes that easier actually equals efficiencies that get to free up time to be spent on other things that are more important, but.
I think part of it, this, this particular contract is, at least is a fixed price contract. We know at the beginning of the year how much it's going to cost for this payroll system. I think the issue that we had some discussion, the finance committee in contractual services here largely focused around Baker Tilly. That is not a fixed price contract. That's on a per-service or per-hour basis. So we are spending more with them this year than we did last year. We didn't know that at the budget time. Part of that, I, as I understand it, is because of additional audit requirements and, and reporting requirements to the state. Um, and, and their services are part of that, that cost. But I think that's, I mean, that's a huge number. It's, it's not ten thousand dollars, that's, you know, ten, twelve, fifteen times that amount. That's what we need to look at. I- is that the right way to contract for those kinds of services? I mean, and honestly, is that the right company to contract with? Uh, you know, there, there are competitors out there as well.
I will say, Mr. Hughes, that they do offer us a discount, uh, sometimes up to like forty-one percent, just like, um, example, like a lawyer's rate would be by the hour. Uh, but if a lawyer is doing contractual services for a company, um, a lot, often they might offer a discount on the hour, you know, instead of like three fifty an hour, maybe two hundred an hour, that sort of thing. So Baker Tilly does offer those discounts to us as well. And, um, like I said, we've talked to them. We don't foresee a whole lot more coming in. Uh, the last audit that I just got done with, I have not gotten the final call on that or final email. Um, but I, you know, things may trickle in from that. Um, and like I said, this is just a, uh, an amount that we felt like would justify the rest of the year, uh, based on what we're seeing now, based on last year's amounts. And that, that's really where.
Standing that we had, that you've had, and I thought Ed maybe said something about, you had an additional three or four additional, um,
audits.
Audits this year that the state required.
Yeah, like, um, are, the company that handles the capital assets for our audit, that's paid out of this. Um, so that's, comes out yearly until those capital assets get done in a different way than we, than we have that. So, yes, a lot of it does pertain to Baker Tilly. As far as contractual services, Baker Tilly does more than just like a contractual service cost. They have other, other, they have different departments within their company that are utilized, you know, in different ways. But as far as contractual services, uh, it would relate to the audits. Yes, that's correct.
I would say I could give two examples. Since the state now requires gap reporting, Baker Tilly has helped us with that. Um, also with the ARP reporting, American Rescue Plan.
That's not paid out contractual services, Kate.
Oh, I'm pretty sure it is.
Uh, Sarah, for next week, can you bring us the Baker Tilly agreement letter, the current one?
And that was something that came up during finance committee was, you know, what, what does that contract look like? Counsel is in control of contracts. It's the commissioners get to make those decisions. So we were curious what that number looked like, what, you know, what's our hourly rate or, or how we're, we're paying them. Cause we're not the, I mean, commissioners use them for different things. Other departments use Baker Tilly, so there's just that one contract.
I'd like to move to amend the request to thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
Alright, so Bill motioned to amend to thirty thousand dollars and Matt seconded. Bill. Alright, so now we're voting on the amended amount of thirty thousand dollars. Roll call please.
The clarification, this vote is to amend and then they'll vote to approve, which has already been motioned.
Okay.
I'm sorry, uh, one other question.
Yep.
What did you say about the already expended?
I'm sorry, already what?
Has, has the, these monies been, in essence?
Hundred and nine thousand. She's spent a hundred and twenty-seven thousand so far this year.
Yeah, there's still thirteen at this point in time.
Okay.
I'm just trying to plan ahead.
Alright, so roll call on the motion to reduce to thirty thousand. Okay, Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes. Mr. Kance.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Alright, now on the vote for the thirty thousand dollar appropriation. Roll call please. Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kance.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
No.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
County General Data IT, one twenty, three sixty-two, repair and maintenance software, thirty-nine thousand, four hundred thirty-one for a total of thirty-nine thousand, four hundred thirty-one.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. Jim, I'll let you explain this one for us.
Uh, the request is for the HR software that's being put in, the employee portal and the, uh, web access to store the data. And I can ask Tanya if she has any more to add on to it, but that's basically what I know. The money's going into my budget because that product is supported by the vendor that we have our HR, I'm sorry, our, uh, accounts payable and payroll now. So that's the reason it went into there and I.
Tanya Dunsmore, Chief Deputy Auditor. Um, so Jim gave you the, um, what it is. And the details on that is that it's Employee Portal and an HR module. It's two separate things. It's a. It's a contract that was signed after budget was approved in twenty twenty-three for the twenty twenty-four budget. So the contract was signed after the fact, therefore that's why it's not in the budget this year. I will let you all know that Jim has put it in for the budget. For twenty twenty-five, so it is in there, um, as far as the, uh, annual, annual costs. And what it is, is, um, employee portal, it's going to eliminate a lot of spreadsheets. And emails for the HR to the employees. The employees will have their own like access to a portal where they can access their payroll stubs, their W twos, et cetera. HR will be able to go in instead of sending an email for all the phone number changes that they do or. Or that's just one example, but anything the HR would want to put into the portal. For employee access, for, for information, communication, they can put it into the portal. The employees can, um, go into the portal theirself and get any, and all that information. It reduces the, uh, workload on the exchange servers, et cetera, which is where IT comes in. Like he said, the budget is in his budget. That's why we're asking for it to go into this, uh, be appropriated into the IT budget. For the bills that came in after the contract was approved for twenty twenty-four. So, um, the HR module, what that is, is we currently, we currently have one, it's called Sage. And it's a, um, not a very user friendly product. It's a standalone product. And it's five thousand dollars a month, the new one, since it's under the same financial system that we already currently have and use. It's forty-five hundred a month, so we are saving five hundred a month in that, in that aspect with the HR module. And, um, what it does is also it eliminates the maintenance on the standalone. Um, product as far as maintenance and server, et cetera. And then, um, with that, the employee portal also normally it would be a cost like. Of twenty-six thousand, over twenty-six thousand for the employee port- portal in order to have the employee inquiry. And the time entry included on that. And, um. We, we, um, negotiated or Ed negotiated for twenty-one. Um, and so that will also, that will also bring about. Uh, time entry is for the, to eliminate, eventually eliminate. The time sheet entries for all the employees. So with that, we have over five hundred employees. When you, when you take the cost of. Of the employee portal and you break it down per employee, you're looking at about fifty dollars an employee. At this rate, um, that he negotiated. Also, there was some security questions that he had. And that sort of thing in order to, um. Well, to, to want to use this type of service and therefore this company is customizing it. Around our county as far as what we have, what we use. How we calculate, how we, you know, how we submit, I guess you would say, um, that sort of thing. And, and of course with HR to. All the departments, not just like payroll department. And, um, so anyways, there's some customizing going on in order to accommodate us in that way. And make it more to our satisfaction, you could say.
One of the things we talked about in finance too was the challenge of how we account for vacation time and such. And that was some of the customization that has to go in since they aren't working, they're on a thirty-two and a half hour work week. And you do like two hour increments for.
We also have a, a big thing here is we have multiple lines. So we have employees that maybe get paid half out of this fund and half out of that fund or, you know. Stuff like that. So we have multiple lines, um, versus maybe like a big corporation where everybody just has their one line. So that's another customized portion that they will be.
But is, is this thirty-nine, four, thirty-one implementation cost or, or maintenance fees?
Now, this is a little bit of everything for both. Uh, there is a implementation fee. There is a license fee. As far as for the HR module, um, of course, those are gonna be like one-time things, you know what I'm saying? Um, the, um.
And it's overlapping Sage, so we're paying twice basically while it's being implemented, in essence. Is that out of warranty or maintenance or whatever? Okay. That, that's fine.
It's, the Sage is, it's usable, but it's, it's not paying the maintenance on it for support.
Okay, yeah, I got you.
This is through the current financial system that we already have and use, which is SSI.
So just to be, just to reiterate what you said, Tanya. So we're establishing a HR software that will give employees themselves the ability to. See their things, which most businesses have.
Yeah, and update documents too.
Yeah, update documents, W nine, W twos, things of that nature, right?
We're trying to push forward into the future a little bit.
Future, how about we just get into the twenty-first century, you mean? Is that actually what we're trying to do?
And, and get away from the spreadsheets eventually, get away from the emails, you know, where people can just access their information themselves. Whenever they wanna access it, sort of thing. And.
We're taking some of the burden away from HR, in essence, um, which is another story, but the, the, um. What was I gonna say? Oh, the time sheets component. All county employees submit a time sheet currently. Even if they're not clocking in and out like they do in the highway department. Does this offer the ability to clock in and clock out sort of scenario or?
No, it's, it's still an entry. It's still a time entry.
Okay.
Um, I can tell you that we have been the pilot for it. Our office has been the pilot. We've used it for three pays, maybe four, three or four.
Pilot in all of SSI?
That, no, the pilot for our county with.
Oh, I see. I got you. I'm sorry. You the auditor's office, not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, just to, just to use it and see, you know, s- see if everything's going through properly, that sort of thing to the payroll. Uh, area. And so like I submit it, so right now the employees are currently sending me a time sheet, like a spreadsheet. And they're getting, they log in under their own login username, password. And then they do their entry on there, which it holds. For a lot of people, that's gonna be, um, more of a convenience, you could say, because instead of having to fill it all in. It's already filled in. If you work the same hours, you know what I'm saying? You can pretty much just hit submit. Am I right? As far as like what you guys see on your end. And then when I get it, I get an email that just says, ready for approval. So I just can go in and I can check it, prove, 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 prove. And then it's, and then. The payroll area is able to bring that up, view it, you know, submit whatever they need to do with it. Um, so we're doing both right now, but because we're the pilot and we're testing it and we haven't ventured. Out to another office yet to.
Yeah. So even though it wasn't budgeted, we didn't know what the number was. I know we had this conversation in twenty-three. Right? So I wish that we should have, we should have put something in for this last.
I don't know that we did.
I did. We, we, we had a conversation that you guys are gonna be implementing HR employee portal at some point.
Maybe at some point, yeah, maybe. All they know is the contract was, I don't even know what month, but it was signed after adoption.
October.
I know, it's, it's October.
It was signed in October? Yeah, I mean, that's only a month, so.
We, we sealed our budget at the beginning of October, right? I think we approved it, so it's probably before we even.
I know.
The one-time charge.
I think that's what they're just short in that line.
I can tell you the support. Um, or not support, I guess the. I don't wanna say that.
Jim said he built it into his budget for next year.
Support contract that runs, um, forty-five hundred, uh, on the HR portal. Or visual intelligence, which is, uh, part of their naming. Uh, but anyways, that is from like August of this year until July of twenty twenty-five next year.
Forty-five hundred.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Like some of it's implementation fee, some of it's license fee. I will say the license fee is probably the largest.
So thirty-nine, four is just a one-time charge, correct?
Yes, yes. I mean, cause this is a little bit of, uh, it's different things added together.
What type of virus control do we have on, on something like this?
Yep, that's.
On the program itself.
There wouldn't be on the.
It's, it's on our local servers, which we have antivirus on throughout our, all of our servers. There's no specific software or antivirus on the, uh, SSI server. Other than our county SOFO software.
Is SSI locally hosted here?
Yes.
Good question. Two questions. Number one, will this eliminate issues with. Employees pay being missed, being submitted, not getting paychecks or getting them late. Um, that issue go away? And then the second question is, would this system incorporate? Um, current way the highway, or eliminate the way the highway department is currently doing theirs? Or we still have two different time systems?
I would think if they were going to customize it for us, um, might be a possibility. However, they are doing a clock in, clock out procedure where this is still. A time entry versus clock in, clock out and that registering all the. Communic- doing the communicating for the time card. You know what I'm saying?
Do their time cards electronically submit to this system?
I'm sorry.
Will their time cards submit electronically to this system?
I don't believe so. It'll still, it'll be that the department head or office manager will. They could submit differently to us, I believe. As far as how that department head submits it to our payroll department. There's, there's two different things going on there because you got your employees doing their time. Then you've got all the department heads across the county that have to submit it to payroll to answer your late payment. I apologize. That was my fault. I do your guys' payroll and I didn't do it, plain and simple. Until it dawned on me and I called everyone. Well, when you called, then I was like, oh my gosh, you know what I'm saying? My error, cause I have to put that in.
Well, that, that's.
So.
That's why I asked.
Still have to put that in.
So, so it does, but an employee still needs to submit?
Yes.
That was what I was getting at.
The employee still has to do theirs. They'll log in, they'll do their username, they'll do their password, they'll do their time. Then the department head will receive an email. And they can, they know that employee has submitted their time and they can go into, they have. Um, access to see everyone's rather than just their own. And so that department head can go in, they can check the time entry. Uh, based on, you know, what they've been keeping track of, if this person called in or what, you know, their, their own personal job. Um, and they just submit. So then the payroll deputy. Gets notification as far as this, this department's ready, basically.
And then I have one, one more question. And, and by, that was no big deal. That was settled within an hour, just so you know, once it was it, in, in an hour, but, um. Last question. Did you say this contract was already signed?
That was signed last year at the end of the year, sometime after adoption date. Uh, the contract was signed for it. So therefore this bill, the bill this year. Is not in the budget. That's what I'm trying to explain. It was something that's not in the budget because it wasn't brought about prior to budget. You know what I'm saying? So now it's in the budget for twenty twenty-five in ITs.
Do we normally sign contracts before we've got approval of funding?
The commissioners are in charge of contracts.
I mean, still the same question. They should still run that by us if we're gonna approve the funding.
I would say that's a question for the commissioners, not for me.
Wouldn't be the first time that they've kind of done what.
Well, that's why I brought up the fact that I do think that it was brought up to us. From the auditor's office and, but I mean, obviously not from the commissioners, nor I don't think we knew there was contract or when it was gonna be signed, so.
That is a fair question. Like that, you sign a contract before the funding's in place. That doesn't work anywhere else. I mean, it's just ridiculous. Nothing towards you, Tom.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions about this? Carrie, now in roll call, please.
Okay, gotta get back on the other, put my other hat on. Uh, Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
I'm gonna say no again.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. Thank you. Now we're outside of county general. These are all their own funds.
Public Defender's Supplemental Fund, two forty-seven, five thirty-six equipment. One thousand fifty for a total of one thousand fifty.
Make the motion to approve. Second.
Take over, Matt. Any questions?
Tell me what the machinery and equipment is for the record, please.
Shelley Harvey, Office Manager, Public Defender's Office. Uh, our old, or I should say old. Our former investigator did not want a desktop computer. Our new investigator that we hired, who started in Jul- well, late July. Uh, did want a computer, so I pulled money out of supplemental funds. Um, or I'm asking to pull money out of supplemental funds to pay for that computer, um, that we got set up for him.
So it's not that somebody's just being needy and I don't like this computer, I want a different one.
Right, right. There, there was not one at all. And that's why, uh, I could get that out of supplemental funds. Because it's not a recurring fund, uh, recurring expense out of that fund, which we're not allowed to do. And I will still get, uh, forty percent reimbursement on this.
You guys have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there in that fund. This is forty percent reimbursable too.
Yes.
All ahead.
Any additional questions? Carrie, now in roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Alright.
MVH restricted eleven seventy-three, three eleven contractual services. Nine hundred seventy-five thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents. For a total of nine hundred seventy-five thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. This is for the community crossings, uh, matching monies. Do we have any additional questions for Carrie?
Just one quick one. It, was this for like a specific bridge you guys are doing or is this just getting it out of the way?
And I'm gonna give you the list of roads that it's gonna be for.
Awesome.
So, um. The MVH restricted and then the next one that's after that, that is the community crossing money. So both of those monies will pay for the following roads. So it's gonna be Wheeling between Airway and south of State Road twenty-eight. Cowan Road from four hundred south to six hundred south. Cowan Road from State Road sixty-seven. Or the bypass to and County Road four hundred south. Point from Fusion or old State Road sixty-seven to the city of Muncie. It's gonna be the boundary line for the city. Um, eight fifty north between Gaston Town Limits and Wheeling. Seven hundred south between a thousand west, which is also the Madison Delaware County line. And nine fifty west. And eight seventy-five west between Corner Road and the Henry County line.
Lot.
It is a lot for.
So Carrie, these are mostly in motion already?
Yes.
And, um, I have had concern about the Wheeling component. I just, well, I'm gonna air it because I've heard multiple comments about.
Okay.
That, that that road was not one in, in disrepair from south of twenty-eight to, to the airway strip or was not in. Bad shape and, um, just saying that because I've had constituents ping me about why we're doing that and complaining about it and, and whatever. So, um, is there any? Was there a reason or, or what, what was the justification for doing that stretch?
Yeah, Tommy Humbert, Highway Department. So, so is this professional people or just homeowners?
Folks in the area, yeah.
Yeah, all these roads are on like a phaser system. We go off a rating system. Yeah, all these roads are on like a phaser system. We go off a rating system on these roads. That's why we maintenance roads before we pave them, repave them again. If we don't maintenance, which is chip and seal, those roads will get in. Bad shape where they have to be a new base put in, stuff like that. So I understand the public does not understand, the homeowners do not understand, but there is a rating system. I wish Troy was here. He could give you more on the rating system. But these are all planned roads, you know, these are all planned. This is not something we just pulled out of the air and said, we're going to do this today because. Matt lives over here. No, we're going to go off the system. And we're going to attack the roads. That are the highly traveled roads. We don't want to let them get into bad shape. We want to keep them either maintenance. We get, we got a bunch of bad feedback when we maintenance major roads. Okay? We have to do that. If we don't, we'll lose them by the time we come back to repave them, so.
So that's part of a plan.
It's a plan, yeah, yeah.
And I will tell you that the phaser program also comes through, um. The Planning Commission. So they have access to the roads and they're on a scale, I'm going to say a one through five. And also the state to get this money through the community crossing, they look at the phaser and the, um. The road and what kind of condition it is and.
Is that plan publicly available for people to see?
The phaser program?
The overall road plan, the, the, just relative to in the next five years, here's the roads we're going to, that are on that list.
Um.
Or whatever the number is.
I mean, we have a list, but we don't have anything out there publicly. I don't think that Planning Commission, they don't have a list. I'm just saying that planning has, they're part of the phaser program.
And on that five-year plan that we have, roads are going to change depending on, that's why we hate to throw it out there because this person has guaranteed their road's going to be done. Well, what happens when this, this falls apart on us, something we weren't, you know, we, sometimes they get moved ahead or set back, you know?
I, I think you, if you did go down that route, you would have to put it up as like a preliminary plan. When I, when I advertise with these council meetings and I put our agenda out, I always make a point to say this is a preliminary agenda that could change up to the start of the meeting. If you did go down that route, you could always include something like that, that these may change based off the need, like you said, if something comes.
I totally agree with you. I wish that worked that way with the public though, you know? I mean, I wish they would understand the way you're making it sound like they will understand, but yeah, I agree. I, yeah, I know, I agree with what you're saying, but, uh. Yeah, things are all subject to change. I mean, any of you guys are welcome to stop out by. We have a huge map out there. We can show you what's been paved, it's different colors on all the years. What we're attempting to pave, but like I said, sometimes there's, there's major changes in our roadway, you know? We don't know when the farmer's going to drop his plow and, and tear the road up. We're going to have to go pave, pave that area.
Sure.
Okay, because he took off, we don't know who he was. Now we can't do this road over here. So now we're going to maintenance it to try to get by a couple more years so we can work it back in.
Given the dynamic with the public primarily, I do think more is, is better. So like to Ryan's point, even if it's marked preliminary, people. Again, I mean, it's the number one thing you hear about, right? Roads always. So. More is less, less is more, not, there's not more. We need to have that available if we can to at least reference.
Right.
You know what I mean? On a regular basis, whether it's us or whether it's commissioner, whoever's getting asked of the question. This, Marissa, that was part of the finance packet that had the list of roads. I'd like to see that, make sure it gets in the minutes too, that. Because this is Carrie, what you submitted for the thing, so. And I don't think everybody got this, I don't think, but anyway, it's the list that Ryan just asked about, but. Uh, again, just in lieu of trying to.
Well, I, I don't have a problem sharing it with any of you. I don't have a problem telling somebody we're going to try to get to it. But when you put it out there on social media, which I will refuse to do on our social, social media. You're going to get ate up. You're going to get ate up. You're going to get trashed. I mean, I get trashed enough.
We get trashed when you're doing it anyway.
I get it. I get it. It's not a real place, Tommy. Who cares? We, we, we get trashed by trying to do positive things, so I mean, it's.
I, I know, but that's, that's the way of the world. I don't think that's, that's the reason. That, that's not a reason really. It, it, it's, we're going to, you're getting, like I said, I've already gotten. Feedback on what's already happening, so.
The crazy thing is everybody's got feedback, but who is the professional that has the feedback to give you the right?
No, it's not about their feedback. It's about just informing them.
Right, right.
Yeah.
You can post it on a website and not necessarily on social media. If someone chooses to share that link on social media.
Yeah.
And that grant money, the community crossing particularly is, I mean, it's funded and, you know, we, we should be able to.
I think something you said, like that map you have highlighted, that would be something awesome thing that you could post on your social media and show the citizens. Because just because they think that maybe their road's not been done or they haven't seen you work and they think you guys aren't as busy as you are, but. Like you said, you've got a whole map highlighted of all the progress you guys.
Right, and I don't have a problem with.
The map is like six foot by six foot.
I, I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem like putting what we're doing like this out there. But like I said, when you, when you get going down the road and things start changing, that's when it's going to be a really conflictive and a lot of.
The more people understand, the less questions you'll get.
Yeah. That's just for record. How many miles road do you have, Tommy?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred and.
Seventy.
Seventy, seventy-six, yeah, yeah.
Well, this is always a good time to plug that VIL helped create and Tommy and I worked on a, a website so you know whose road belongs to who, because sometimes there's a misconception too of. Who owns which roads, and I know there's a lot of complaints about like East McGalliard, right? So you can go click on East McGalliard and see which, which government entity is responsible for that part of the road. Um, and so.
Yeah, and thank you for that. That really helps out a lot. I wish more people would use that. They still don't use it. You know, it's out there for what we wanted to grab, they don't grab. We would like for them to grab that because that's very helpful and thank you for.
Pin it at the top of your page. You guys got your own page. Pin it at the top.
We've had, we've had it on there. We've had it pinned up there. Don't get too many lines.
All right, well.
Thank you.
Yes, Eugene had one question.
Carrie, Tommy, with these funds and the funds from the community crossing, uh, how many road miles will you pave with this money?
Oh, Eugene. I, I don't have that.
Just to note, the county did get the maximum community crossing grant.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Awesome.
Um, I can get that for you. I, I don't have it with me right now.
We did get that, but this is not reflected in this request, right? This is not all of it.
Because this came in less than what the max was, so you're working.
Correct, yes.
There's more to, to come.
All right, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cant.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
And we've got the same on that additional community crossing, so entertain a motion.
Go move. Second.
Motion by Eugene, second by Dan. More of the same. Do we have any additional questions after that lengthy talk? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cant.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
You.
All right. Juvenile DOC Grant eighty-one nine ninety-four.
I'm sorry, before we go any further. I just need to point this out. Um, the community crossings grant that we just approved.
Yeah.
It shows we did nine hundred seventy-five thousand, seven hundred eighty-six dollars. Shows our balance only had thirty-six thousand dollars.
This is a grant, so this is pretty typical for grants, yes, yeah.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
You're right.
Under wages and salaries, one oh one probation officer, fifty thousand, six, ten. Under employee benefits, one seventy-one FICA, three thousand, two hundred thirty-seven. One seventy-two perf, four thousand, seven hundred thirty-nine dollars. One seventy-three health insurance, twenty-five thousand, one hundred twenty-six dollars, eleven cents. One seventy-four life insurance, a hundred and twenty-three. One seventy-five disability insurance, three hundred thirty-six dollars. Under professional services, three-ten, fourteen thousand, four hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. For a total of ninety-eight thousand, six hundred.
I'll make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. This is a brand new grant, everyone.
Yes.
Lee, would you like to explain?
Sure. Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. Um, Jane from DCCC helped juvenile probation. Apply for the grant and they gave us enough money sort of to get a probation officer for juvenile probation. As we all know, probation, the juvenile department is struggling with all the cases out there. And. What they gave us doesn't necessarily cover, depending on who we hire. Um, a full probation officer, it just depends on what health insurance they need and if we hire somebody with any kind of, um. Experience, um, a base salary for, uh, no experience, no years of service is forty-two thousand, and then it goes up from there. So moving forward, we don't know how we're going to maintain this unless DOC continues to up our grant, which we don't know since this is a brand new grant, we don't know how they'll do that. So we, we. Appropriated the whole entire grant with what we could. We, I'll probably have to come back and move things around once we hire someone and know what they need, what their years of experience are and all of that. Um, the three-ten professional services is going back to DCCC. That is to help with, um. Monitoring juveniles that need to be on GPS. So that goes back to their services. Um, the rest of it, I will have to figure out once we hire somebody, but I wanted to get it appropriated so we can get somebody in that position.
Any questions?
I do. It's a one-year grant.
Mm-hmm. It's July to, it's from July to August or June, July, something like that.
So we'll bring on a full-time employee for a one-year grant.
Mm-hmm.
Seems risky.
It is risky. Jane, Jane assures that once you have a DOC grant, as long as you use it, they re, they redo it every year.
But what if we don't? Then what?
Then we don't have an, then we don't have an employee.
Do we not have an employer, somebody coming asking for appropriation for us to fund?
We don't have an employee. I mean, that's all our grant funded positions. Like my FRC coordinator, she's grant funded, and once that grant doesn't renew, we don't have an FRC coordinator.
Quite a few employees in grant lines.
They know that when they come on as a grant employee.
I just want to make sure that we're not in a position where in a year, somebody's asking the council on this employee because a grant for whatever reason wasn't granted.
And I mean, it's not, it's not saying we wouldn't come back and ask for an employee because we need more employees. It's just that we can't say, hey, we got this grant. Now we want you to fund it. It's more of, we need employees. It's not that we would ask you to take over the grant payment.
All right, that's good, good feedback. I appreciate the answer.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cant.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
County Sales Disclosure, eleven thirty-one. Three ninety-three Conference and Training, two thousand, three hundred for a total of two thousand, three hundred.
Make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. Any additional questions on this one? It's used for training hardware, software. This is coming from fees. Money.
And this is colored from your fund that you can always spend on this stuff, correct?
That's correct. I'd like to make an adjustment to it though. Um, the auditor's office has told me we can take some of this out of the county's training fund. So I'd like to reduce that line item to seven hundred dollars.
Do we need to make a motion to reduce?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll make the motion. Second.
All right, so motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. All right, roll call on adjusting this to amending to seven hundred dollars.
Hang on just a second. I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Making my notes. All right, Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cant.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
So what, what can this be used for? And who determines that?
Training.
I'm sorry?
Hardware, software and training.
Hardware.
Those related items, yeah.
Uh-huh. Is that determined by us or?
By the legislature.
Okay.
Yeah.
And. Okay, sorry.
I was just asking, are there any additional questions? All right, roll call on the amount of seven hundred dollars.
Motion to approve the amended amount?
We already did that.
Oh, excuse me, though.
We already had the motion to read it in.
Yeah.
So now we're.
We're just going to vote on both.
We already voted to.
Voted.
At the seven.
Approve.
We already did that. We just are reading a roll call.
Roll call. As amended, as amended.
We ready?
Yes.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cant.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
And Ms. Piper.
Yes.
All right.
County Drug Free Community. Eleven forty-eight. Twenty-five thousand, five hundred ninety-five for a total of twenty-five thousand, five hundred ninety-five.
Make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. And Jennifer, would you like to explain this one for us?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Lovell-Moore. I'm the Executive Director of the Delaware County Prevention Council. We are the local coordinating council for Delaware County. So we receive the funds and fees every year that come in from people that have infractions due to. Alcohol and other drugs while driving and other things. So these are the fees that have gone in. We then use this money every year to give out grants to other organizations of the community that do. Uh, prevention, education, justice reform and things like that associated with substance misuse issues.
This money is just what, what's been generated and you want to appropriate it so you could. Give it out to people who can use it.
Yes.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any additional questions?
I think we, is that we don't approve their budget.
Correct. All right, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cant.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
EMS Ambulance Replacement, forty-nine fifteen. Five thirty-seven vehicles, one hundred fourteen thousand, eight hundred eighty-six. For a total of one hundred fourteen thousand, eight hundred eighty-six.
Make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. Uh, this is to finally finish that ambulance.
Yeah, we started this project back in September of last year. And we're taking this truck in, uh, September the nineteenth. Should have it back December. Don't need to check right away. I just need the approval for it, so.
Just the ambulance, three chassis.
Mm-hmm, and, uh, the guy just came down to look at the next ambulance to get in line, so I'll probably come back next month and see if I can get the chassis for that if he gets me a quote in time. Um, we get a discount if we buy the chassis early. But it won't go in until next November.
Right, I know. You said it was like eight, nine months behind or whatever.
It's a huge pain, but it used to. We could, we could start in February and be done December. Ever since COVID, we can't do it anymore, so I, I don't know. I don't, I don't know what happened, but it's a mess, yeah, anyway.
All right, any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cant.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
All right.
EMS, oh, excuse me. Uh, I would like to point out this next one has the wrong amount. It has the right grand total. Um, but the amount was reduced from one seventy-four, two eighty-four, sixty to one fifteen, six sixty-six, forty-nine.
Hey, I was, I was over here curious what that was.
Yeah, go ahead, Kita.
So it's the total amount.
Go ahead and read it, Kita, but that's your new total is one fifteen, six, six, six point four nine.
EMS Capital Improvement, forty-nine, ten, five fifty, other capital outlays. One hundred fifteen thousand, six hundred sixty-six, forty-nine for a total of. One hundred fifteen thousand, six hundred sixty-six and forty-nine cents.
Make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. Any questions on this? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mister Flanagan.
Yes.
Mister Hughes.
Yes.
Mister Cant.
Yes.
Mister Mokel.
Yes.
Mister Webb.
Yes.
Mister Whitehead.
Yes.
Ms Piper.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright.
Delco cumulative building eleven thirty six. Two twenty operating supplies, three thousand for a total of three thousand.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan. Uh, this is for some security badges and such, right?
They need a new like printer head for it and so.
It's the printer to create the security badges?
So it's like a part on it and plus they need badges and ribbon for it, so. If it's not used, it'll just go back into there, I just don't really know exactly how much I'll have to use.
Okay.
But they have their own machine out there that they use.
Any additional questions?
Like we said, it's the first, we've drawn out of this fund for like. Four or four years.
Yeah.
Yes, I didn't know it existed.
I didn't either.
It looked like previously there had been like. Refunds from like key fobs that had went into there and I think. John had said that there was a tax. From long ago that went into there, but it's just hasn't been used in a long time.
So Sarah's trying to track down the ordinance. That. Created this fund. Right?
Correct, yeah.
Because right now, it doesn't appear there's any more money going into it, but there's. Sixty five grand sitting in it.
Yes.
Thanks.
So we don't know how the sixty five thousand was generated?
That's what we're working on, figuring out.
John had told me that there used to be like some type of tax that went into there and then they had done away with that.
It says cumulative building, that means there was a tax.
Hmm. But it's done now.
Yeah.
Alright, roll call please.
Mister Flanagan.
Yes.
Mister Hughes.
Yes.
Mister Cant.
Yes.
Mister Mokel.
Yes.
Mister Webb.
Yes.
Mister Whitehead.
Yes.
And Ms Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, someone like to read the motion?
Make motion to approve financial transfers and amend salary ordinance with like reductions.
Second.
Motion by Eugene, second by Dan, roll call please.
Mister Flanagan.
Yes.
Mister Hughes.
Yes.
Mister Mokel.
Yes.
Mister Webb.
Yes.
Mister Whitehead.
Yes.
Mister Cant.
Yes.
Ms Piper.
Yes.
In our packet, we all received our backfilling reports, so I'll entertain a motion that we received these.
So moved.
Second.
By Dan, second by Eugene, roll call please.
Mister Flanagan.
Yes.
Mister Hughes.
Yes.
Mister Mokel.
Yes.
Mister Webb.
Yes.
Mister Whitehead.
Yes.
Mister Cant.
Yes.
Ms Piper.
Yeah.
Alright, moving on to ordinances and resolutions. We have our job descriptions twenty twenty four dash fifteen, uh, second reading is on the agenda for today.
I make the motion to, to table this because we haven't got quite all the information. Concreted yet.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion to table this at this time, uh, we were still waiting on some information on some of the job descriptions. Uh, that we thought we'd get on Friday. Um, so we didn't have time to look over anything, I know Matt's received some, some things and we have a Dropbox. Uh, where these documents are being helped for our viewing pleasure. Um, right now we have a motion to table, roll call please.
Mister Flanagan.
Yes.
Mister Hughes.
No.
Mister Mokel.
Yes.
Mister Webb.
Yes.
Mister Whitehead.
Yes.
Mister Cant.
No.
Ms Piper.
Yes.
Alright, so motion is the job description, second reading is tabled for now, moving on to appointments and committee reports. Uh, don't believe I have anything for this, any of my committee members have any updates? Nope, we have no old business, new business. Um, I was just talking to Tanya before the meeting and actually the estimated property tax cap impact report and max levy would be read together. Um. So in the past, the council has chosen to make a motion that there be no recommendation for review of these. Um. But I believe we got a copy. Of the estimated property tax cap impact report and max levy. Let's see, that was sent to us back on. The sixteenth of August. So, at this time I would entertain a motion for no recommendation of review.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bill, second by Eugene.
I guess by way of explanation, the council would have the opportunity to go through every unit. And review their max levy and, and tax gap, but. Who got any particular purpose that I could ever see.
Yeah, as long as I've been on council, we have not reviewed those. Uh, roll call please.
Mister Flanagan.
Yes.
Mister Hughes.
Yes.
Mister Mokel.
Yes.
Mister Webb.
Yes.
Mister Whitehead.
Yes.
Mister Cant.
Yes.
Ms Piper.
Yes.
Alright, so that puts us down to the F L S A discussion, um. I think this came up a little bit in our last meeting. That the federal guidelines had changed, uh, back on, was it July first? And then they changed again on January first. Um, so this is more just time for us all to chat about it, there's no actual um. Document for this, I know Matt, you want to take it from here and kind of explain. Your concerns?
So we had, um, the orders office sent out, um, a spreadsheet of. Um. Of potential. Gaps in the F L L S A requirements as of July one. Um, I failed to bring it up, but let me find it real quick. Thank you. If you got one for me. Good Jesus. One superintendent, one supervisor. Here it is, okay. Thank you.
Uh. Alright.
Got public health nurse, okay. Okay, so back to the F L S A thing, so this list that was provided shows that there's a, a couple. Gaps, um, that we have relative to salary requirements as outlined by F L S A. Um, the first one is the Director of Environmental in the Health Department. There's an eighty six dollar gap because of seven one twenty four. That will.
That number again?
Eighty six dollars.
Okay.
That will increase on January one to fourteen thousand eight hundred fifty four. Um. The, i- i- in lieu of making an adjustment to salary currently. We can leave it be. Um, knowing that there's a potential for a resource who's not. An exempt employee who's not making the minimum salary would be. Um. Would be available to have overtime, to, to garner overtime, um, to, to meet that threshold. The other, the big one that I wanted to cover was chief deputies, because on this list, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight chief deputies. In the current job descriptions that we're reviewing. They're listed as excluded. Which would exclude them from the F L S A requirement. They're not exempt, uh, or that marked exempt, they weren't marked exempt currently. So. If. We change that as part of the job description review. Those two would be, there's eight of them would be short to the tune of roughly. Six, oh. Twenty two, probably about thirty some thousand dollars. Overall, on one one twenty five though. We are most likely going to be seeing a gap of two hundred and seventy three thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars or thereabouts. For. Gaps in the F L S A requirement as of one one.
How much is that?
Two seventy three, nine sixteen. So it's something to bear in mind as we're reviewing next week on our salary. There will be, most likely need to be, I think, some. Discussion on how we're addressing that. Um, not as part of a raise, but just as a. Requirement based on what the federal government has outlined for exempt employees.
We'll want to make sure we call these out as we go through those budget line items and, um, we'll have all. I think by then, we'll have all of our job descriptions too, so we can just double check and match up. To make sure they're all.
Yeah.
In compliance.
Does anyone else have any thoughts on that?
I guess I. There was some encouragement to try to do something now as far as salary adjustments to, to comply with, uh. Fair Labor Standards Act. Problem is, we haven't. Completed the salary study, which is why I voted not to table the. The job descriptions today, I would like to get that. Finalized, I, and somebody said, when will those job descriptions be final, and the answer is never. Because they're always going to be changing, we just have to get something in place and then we can make changes as, as necessary down the road. But. To Matt's point, I, I think we have to, we have to wait until we go through the budget process. And get those job descriptions finalized before we can. Address this issue in, in my view. The other point I would want to make is. When the, when the job descriptions say that those chief deputy positions are excluded. It's not that we are excluding them from the operation of law. It's that in the judgment of our, of our consultants. Those positions are simply not covered by F S L A, so.
Cause they're appointed, right?
So be- because of the, the nature of their, yes, they're appointed. They're, they're, uh, basically at will to the office holder and so they, they. There's a specific definition in the law. That would exclude them, it's not something we're doing. But all that sort of has to be addressed, we can't do it now, and I think, I think the idea of trying to make adjustments now just doesn't. We're more likely to make a mistake than to correct one, in my view.
Yep, I would agree with that, part of the reason, also I think that the job descriptions, um, need to be addressed now. Um, or should have been addressed now. Um, knowing that there are gaps in, in what people have been able to review, I, I get that, but there's also five hundred of the, you know, or several hundreds of these. Um, for review, so. Um, as Bill stated, I think the process of review and changing, uh, will be. Probably monthly, you know, once we implement these, because once they're done. Um. And they don't take effect until January one, we would, I would think we were pushing towards that potentially, it's only. It would only happen once the new budget season starts, so. These were just to, to try to do that, so. Anyway.
I would like to, um. Touch on that just real quick, I know, I know we tabled that, but. You know, I heard, I heard council reviews mentioned, when you get it in place, and I just heard you mention something about getting it in place, we're gonna make the adjustments to it. Again, I just, I'm curious. We're not implementing till January one, I'm not understanding the rush to do it. We don't do that in any other thing, we get it right and then we implement it, we don't implement it. And then work out the bugs over a period of several months. For every other thing we do, we work on it. Get it right. And then we bring it in to existence. It just seems like that we're.
Do you want me to answer?
Deviating on this particular subject, and I'm not sure why we're doing it that way.
We're, we're not deviating on it, we're, we're. This is step one in the process, we're having budget. Meetings next week. So we have yet to determine in some cases what's an exempt, non-exempt employee, for an example. Um, which will dictate whether or not we make the change to their salary for next year. So if we're adopting our budget by October and we have yet to get these done, then. How are we, how are we bridging the gap?
I, I understand what you're talking about as far as with the exemptions, toys and, and those things to get worked out. My. Point is what I said before, I think if we're trying to. Implement the salary study to this year's budget, we're backing ourselves in a, in a.
I didn't, we're not talking about implementing it this year, I'm saying just from a job description standpoint, dictating what a person's. Um, status is, is just one factor. In that, in that conversation, so that's why I think it was. Important to try to get those updated ones and the work that's been done implemented sooner rather than later.
Could, could we not do that during the budget process for these, which the ones that you're talking about that are having the, um, that's up in the air, whether.
Well, we've got, I mean, there's a few moving, moving parts here, because we've got the job description portion, which has absolutely nothing to do with salaries.
Well, kind of.
Well, other than the F L S A part, like, right, whether they are exempt, non-exempt, like, but the actual monies. Is a totally different issue, which we'll address during budget hearings. But some of those where they kind of marry each other here is, we're going to have some positions. Where we need to address, okay, this person is now non-exempt or they're exempt or. What is it gonna, you know, what's the difference to get them to the point where they maybe don't accrue overtime and is that?
Agreed with that.
Is that enough, like, do we want to make that decision to put them as exempt because maybe overtime would be. More expensive, like, we gotta make those analysis then. So there's like. Two different things going on and one thing that kind of impacts both.
I agree.
But right now, we're only talking about the job description, nothing about the monies. With that, with that, that, um.
And could you reiterate, how many positions are up in the air on that, as far as. Trying to figure out their status, whether they're exempted or, you say that somebody's like eight or ten?
There's eight chief deputies, but then there were just a couple others, I think, on Matt's list.
Yeah, those are the ones that Pam and Lee just handed out to you. I believe, I think those are it. Um. And, and some of these are, one of these I don't think actually was an exempt issue, it was more of a, a, a full on change to the job. Um. In the clerk's office, but the highway superintendent or supervisor, the public health nurse was asked for a change in the F L S A status. Uh, those two particularly, at least right now, are the ones that, that I think haven't been discussed in our work session.
And you, I know you weren't there on that, that last meeting we had, but they're adding on the. Job grade, you'll see the letters now present, which it wasn't before, so you'll see that on future job description documents.
So are you proposing that we resolve this in this meeting?
No, it's been tabled, so I'm, I was just bringing it up. As part of the F L S A conversation, that it, that those two things are tied together.
Could we not discuss the exempt status without, with that not being tabled?
I mean, we've kind of done that in mass or at length, I should say, at those two. Work sessions we had.
I don't think anybody here from the Health Department, that's one.
Yeah.
And then. Um. The discussion that was going to be had was around the, the highway physician. And then. I don't believe this changed, but I'll double check that one, so there's really only one to discuss.
While you look for that, let's take like a five minute recess, I know we're running really long and I've had a few people. Give me the look, they need a break, so let's recess for five minutes and we'll come back at eleven ten. Give me the look they need a break. So let's recess for five minutes and we'll come back at eleven-ten. All right, and we're back. Thank you, everyone. We're back. All right. Matt, you found what you were looking for?
I think so.
Okay.
All right, so of the job descriptions that. Pam and Lee presented to us, there's four. Please set, let's deal with the clerk one first. Supervising deputy clerk. This was a former. Position that was a common position under the court's first deputy juvenile court. They would like to create or recreate that position into this role, which is supervising deputy clerk. It would go from a non-exempt. Common D position to a exempt pat B position. Um so that's one for uh review. The public health nurse, this one was just delivered to HR yesterday. The only questionable change uh is around the public health nurse. Status of us uh non-exempt. They want it to be non-exempt. I've asked Jamie to weigh in as to why. It would go from a exempt to a non-exempt position. It probably has something to do with call or, or, or other factors, but I don't know the answer to that. And then the last one is the supervisor in the highway department. You'll see two. There's a superintendent job title and a job titled supervisor. They are, in essence, the exact same job description. And they were, the supervisor job description in my unders, in my estimation. Was created specifically for uh Mr. Humbert, who serves as the head of the highway department. Uh under this supervisor role, previously a non-exempt position. Which to at least a few of us during the work session. Does not appear to be the correct status legally, uh because he oversees the entire highway department. The. And bridge, and the bridge, yeah. So there's a supervisor one at the highway level, a supervisor two, excuse me, at the highway level. There's no supervisor two at the bridge level. Tommy serves as both the supervisor one and the bridge supervisor together. It was discussed in elevating that job title to superintendent, which is more in line with. Tommy's actual job. And creating an exempt position a- accordingly. And then discussing. The amount of overtime pay that, that Tommy gets throughout the course of the year, over the last several years. And aligning, eventually aligning his salary during budget to the superintendent role versus the supervisor position. That would take it out of the non-exempt status. He'd no longer be eligible for overtime in the exempt position. Currently, his salary wouldn't change, but uh until January one, if we, if we so choose. So that is, that is the discussion point is do we. Change his title and change. His exempt status. To that. So those are the ones that were, in essence, on the table that didn't, that were actually um. Worth discussing, I guess, and maybe not the right word, but. That didn't have um just minor tweaks. Typically, we added the job grade to every job description. Job category was confirmed. There were a few other. Discussions around changes in the. Categorization, but given that the categorization directly ties to the um. Salary number. To me, that was something we would tackle when we tackle the actual numbers. But in this instance, these ones here. Are directly related to FLSA and their exempt or non-exempt status. The chief deputy one is the one we were just discussing at the end. Previously, our chief deputies have been an exempt, listed as an exempt or currently listed as exempt. And the recommendation from Wagner Shealy was excluded. So that would be something we would. I don't think we can tackle that. I, I would like a legal opinion or some sort of expert opinion as to why excluded is the way, if that's true, that the. Because it's an appointment or whatever might pertain to that. Bill's, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, but you said in our last work session that. You didn't think that the law was clear and it was really at our discretion potentially.
Well, you read the, the, the law and I thought that part was reasonably clear, but. Guess what? I think we do have some discretion uh in interpreting the law. Uh I, I agree with you. It would be beneficial to have, have counsel weigh in on it.
I have a question. You said before when we were talking about. Jobs uh descriptions and being implemented at the first of the year. If we took action on these four right here. Or three, really. Would those take place immediately or at the first of the year?
Well, there was some discussion at two about these, if we adopt, correct me if I'm wrong, guys. I feel like I remember that very first time we met, that. It would be for any new hires coming in from the time we adopted, but. I, I also remember talking about the first of the year, so I don't know if we ever. Because we didn't really make any votes, right? We didn't really decide anything, so I, I don't.
Well, I'm asking because we're not gonna use salaries till the first year. If we switch him. To where he's exempt, not eligible for overtime, and there's four months left in the year, that's gonna significantly impact him financially.
Yeah.
This year.
Yeah.
That's why I'm curious if we do this. Can we make it where it takes effect on January one? Same time the salaries will be taken.
We can make it say whatever we want it to say, right?
The ordinance is introduced, says it takes a force and effect after adoption. And I think what we discussed in the work session is. We will change that to January one, twenty twenty-five to coincide with the budget year.
So would?
Yeah, that's as Jessica's plan, that's up to us.
Yeah.
Is it possible, and I'm gonna defer to Matt because he's. At this point, he, I know he's been really invested in this. Is it your opinion, Matt, that the ones that are in front of us? To, to have these particular changes implemented?
Like a recommendation?
Yes, is that what yours is?
I haven't decided, really. I'm answering from that. We really haven't decided on the um highway. Whether it's a superintendent or supervisor.
Well, I always consider him superintendent. I know that's never been his official title. That's what I've always considered him.
I mean, we, we, the purpose of the discussion on the line item was to discuss that and. Potentially approve the job descriptions with these amended changes from this.
But I'm asking, are you in support of these four?
I am in support of, yes, I'm in support of, well, I don't know, to be honest. I'm not in support of the public health nurse being a non-exempt at this point because I don't think we've justified why that would be. But the, I am in support of the superintendent title being changed and it being an exempt position. Because I think we're outside the law currently. And then the supervising deputy clerk based on that role change. Is, 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 is accurate, yes. So tha- that is my personal recommendation, but that's. That was why we were gonna approve those with these amendments and all of the other amended changes.
Can we make a motion to just approve these right here?
We've got like a ton of them that don't really, had no changes too, right? That, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just easier to do it as a big bundle.
I think when the group got together, um we also discussed. Somewhat at length and reminded each other from time to time. That what, what we're really trying to do here is not to address an individual with a name. And what they're currently doing. We're trying to address a department. And what that responsibility is. So if and when an individual were to leave.
Sure.
We would automatically know who it is that we uh or the commissioner should be hiring. And what the responsibilities are. So. The commissioner would be able to. Give an accurate job description, accurate pay for the person that they, they put that provision. I agree.
Well, maybe we can get Jamie to, to get. Meet with us or be prepared to discuss it during budget. Next week about that particular position and then we'll be in a, we'll be ready to go with all of these at our September meeting.
He did message me. He did say that it previously was exempt, uh or, excuse me, non-exempt. They don't have any supervisory duties. He's not sure why it was changed to exempt.
Now that you mention that, I.
I think he did say that.
Once before as well.
I didn't realize that was this rule, but yeah, so. I do think that's just a course correction from what the. Consultants provided to us, so I would be in favor of, yeah, keeping that the way it is.
Is your broad uh job grade still C?
So is there not a particular urgency with these three then?
There's not any more urgency probably than any other. I don't think, but.
Yeah.
Other than the, in the chief deputy position, which I think is gonna need to be. Delayed anyway, in, in some respects, so.
Cause I'm, I'm with you. I'm in support of these right here. There were some other ones that I had concerns with, but I, as these are presented, I'm in favor of it.
Well, we still have to make a decision. Is it a superintendent or a supervisor for the highway? So.
My vote is it's a superintendent.
Eugene, did you have something you were?
Well, I believe. When Matt says he's, feels like we're outside of the law, I think that's his interpretation of the law. I mean, as we've heard in the working session, it is up to our discretion to decide whether or not. That superintendent position falls square in that FLSA. And I thought we also heard from comments that. We're trying to put an accurate job description of what is currently in place now, not what is in, gonna happen in the future. That's where I got, I, I guess. Dead-ended when I was trying to portray what job prescriptions we don't have, such as a building supervisor or a. Bridge supervisor superintendent. And so it seems like. What I heard at the working session, what we're talking about now are different things. And so that's why I'm in favor of tabling this until we get those things ironed out.
I'm not sure I'm completely following.
All right, at the working session, I asked, why don't we have a job description for a, a bridge superintendent or supervisor, whatever you wanna call it?
Right, right.
One answer that we received was, well, we're trying to put these job descriptions in front of us now based off of what is happening right now. Not what we think will happen in the future because we can change it in the future. When that position needs to have a job description.
Right, and that.
You're, you're saying that for the superintendent of this county highway, you want to create the superintendent job description. And then force the employee into that spot, which is not currently the way that we're hired. They're hired right now.
Currently, the supervisor position mirrors the superintendent job description. Literally to the T, outside of calling it a supervisor versus superintendent.
Yeah, I don't really know the argument. It's just a name. They're both exempt.
Well, to Eugene's point, he's saying that we, in the hierarchy.
They're not both exempt, Brian. Supervisor is non-exempt.
It says on here they're exempt and that's a prob, that's a issue I was gonna bring up.
Yeah, I thought it said that they both were.
Well, the way I have it here, supervisor is non-exempt and the superintendent's exempt.
And the FLA status at the top.
Because we did not change that because of that discussion, Eugene, to your point, right? We didn't change that because of. The discussion about it being a superintendent role.
Didn't someone ask Tommy if the commissioners were okay with this? We're gonna have to hear back from them.
Got you.
I think Tommy's feedback, you wanna. Your question to the commissioners about the status and I think you kind of said that it was, they're just deferring to whatever we decide or something like that.
Did, did Shannon talk to any of you?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
So we should talk to Shannon?
Yeah, I would say I would do that.
So the, the meeting that I was in.
But you said you were gonna talk to him.
I did, but he told me he was gonna talk to you guys. He, he agreed with you.
That first meeting I was in, it was.
Surprisingly, that didn't happen.
We added the superintendent. We changed it to a superintendent role.
I guess based on the confusion, we just.
They requested that it be exempt. That was his whole objection to it. So why is it now saying?
They were treating him as if he were a superintendent in the way that they were categorizing because of those duties.
I'm per, I'm personally, I'm okay with being exempt as long as I'm not gonna lose a lot of money, which is what I would do. You know, I know this ain't about money, but.
It's always about money.
It, it is. I mean, I know we're not just be com- combined. It, it is. I mean, I know we're not just combined to know, you know? But by me losing the overtime, I'm losing because I spent a lot of hours there, which I will still be spending.
You're the one exception to like everyone on, on this whole job description thing.
To Eugene's point, I mean, the consultant's making that basis on the law, their recommendation to make it exempt is based on the law. I'm not sure. I'm trying to interpret it any differently. I'm just taking what they're saying and I agree that. He supervises the largest department outside of jail and public safety. Um, so that would make him an exempt employee by nature. But that's all, that's, that's all I was trying to say with that. I, I do think that we just, we, we need to probably. Re-convene to, to confirm up a, a few of these and make sure that HR has been able to provide us every description that, that exists. And, and put those out there for everybody to see and. Then, you know, we can either call a special meeting or we, I don't know if we can, we really, we practically can't do it during budget, I assume, but that's just.
Well, I think there's a planning commission meeting in this room. The night, that Thursday night that we're in here, so I, we could always say that we were doing another work session. Following the conclusion or what, you know, an hour after the conclusion of it, whatever. I mean, we can do that because we only have to have forty-eight hours for, to advertise. For the work session, right? And so we can do that.
I'll be honest, when I left the work session, I thought we were pretty much.
Done.
On, I mean, I thought we were pretty much on all the same page and what you guys were on. Uh, Shannon was going to be on with also, if we're still on that, but it seems like, I mean, I see where it's changed a little bit, so I don't know how to.
Think.
No, I think we're just trying to clarify.
Okay.
Which way we're going.
So, so where we were at at the work session, that's, that's going to work.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I can, I can talk to you.
I do think that the ordinance language probably needs to fill. I do think the ordinance language should be clear about effective date. So I don't know who needs to.
The one thing to.
Subject to your amendment.
So we can make that.
But you can, you can amend as needed and then that's what it'll be. If you'd like me to draft a proposed amendment, I'd be happy to do that, but I'm not just going to say it's been changed because you guys have a vote on that.
Sure.
Okay, that works.
And the, the bridge, like I said, we put the bridge supervisor back in. As honestly just a safety shield because I don't know what's going to happen with me, okay?
Right.
And I, like I said, I'm the only, I'm the only supervisor superintendent in the state that has. A whole completely different department.
Right.
And I do both, so. As long as it's combined, I'm saving the county a lot, a lot of money.
Right.
Thanks, Tommy.
Yeah, thank you.
Look, look quick for you, look for, did you see the planning commission is going to be in here the Thursday of our?
I believe I saw that on the calendar. Oh, you're not now? Did you move it? You moved it? Okay, then never mind. Okay. I was looking and I was like, oh, we'll have to move our me, okay. Where did you move yours to?
It's the same night. It's in a different.
What location? Okay. The EMA. All right, do we have any elected officials or department heads?
Gavin Green, Delaware County Coroner. Um, I just wanted to give you the monthly kind of update. Sorry, I missed last month and I don't have my printouts. Because we had a, a pretty serious accident fatality this morning. Um, currently we have three hundred and ninety-two cases, uh, that we've entered into our system. Uh, so if you project that out, that'll be a total of five hundred and eighty-eight cases, um, for the year. That's, we're averaging about forty-nine cases a month. And so we're on track to be budget or a little bit less than what we were projected, so. Hopefully in our working session come next week, I'll have some better numbers, um, to be able to see if we're going to be. Giving any money back or if we can reduce any of our budget, as you guys always ask, so. Um, that was that. I wanted to also, maybe. That the state of Indiana, I did get this confirmed that Zach from the prosecutor's office is the leading prosecutor. With dealing. Resulting in death in the state of Indiana, were the leading ones. They actually, he and one of the federal prosecutors came and. Spoke to the coroner's conference, um, that they are leading the whole entire state and they're like setting the bar. So to go off what we were talking about early, we went on a tangent that we're setting the bar and we're setting the investigative. Standard, you could say, of what we're using in order to prosecute these cases. Um, so when it comes to. When it comes to public defenders, when it comes to the prosecutors, we're involved in both because we give them all that information. So they're going to see how they're going to define their whole entire case around the cause and manner and all the contributing factors on side of that too. So, um, we get all the, all the requests and so we want to make sure that we don't look like we are trying to save a thousand dollars. And so, but, oh, well, there's a hole in the, somebody's, the prosecutor's case and vice versa. So that was that. To go along with what we said about the cases, I went to deposition, um, and it was my case. And we, they pled out the day before we were supposed to go to court. So we were prepared, everything is ready for the hundreds, hundreds of hours that we went and prepared and got ready for. Then they waited, they literally wa- walked in the, the door that morning and said, hey, we're going to accept a plea deal. And so that's interesting situations where it's all planned out. We are ready, just like you. Uh, Ryan, I took work off because I'm normally on call for at night. I took off to be at court. And then I found out, hey, you don't have to go. So that was that. About, I wanted to ask Tanya about the, the time, the new system that you guys are trying, how you said that there's a. Uh, there's still manual data entry when it comes to clocking in and clocking out, correct? You said that how it would be automatically filled if you're working eight thirty to three. Their supervisor would just be confirming that they worked eight thirty to three.
That's correct.
But then if, let's say. I was the supervisor approving Rhiannon's time. Could Rhiannon, with that portal that she had, could she say that she came in at eight, she, could she override it and put in that she came in at eight forty-five? And worked till three forty-five?
Not once you approve it.
But if it wasn't approved?
If it wasn't approved, yes, she can change her time entry.
Okay, so we could, so technically we wouldn't have a clock in, clock out system, but our employees could technically manually put it in. And then they would still be falsifying time cards if they said, oh, I came in at two thirty in the morning and worked until five and you find out they didn't, so. I was trying to, I was hearing what Carrie was, I was agreeing with the, the county highway department was saying is. We're not cat, tracking that time, but if it, that system did it, that would help out everyone and that would. You'd have to be on the honor system, but that's a whole other thing. And by the way, I live right outside of, uh, where they're paving on North Wheeling and I appreciate it. So I don't know, maybe constituents just wonder how the heck that was, like, they just added a turn lane like two years ago, so it was nice and paved, but. Um, I kind of pull out and hit that big bump every single time, like I hit it this morning. But it's one of those, like, it's first world problems that I have to hit that bump and it's going to be a nice paved road, so. I'm appreciative of that, so I didn't even know it was going to happen and I'm one of the elected officials, but it was, it was nice to be, uh. To see that being done, so with that, that's all I had. Yeah, does anybody have any questions? All right, thank you.
Any other elected officials, department heads? None? All right, we'll move on to public comment. First up, uh, we've got Ron Crouch. Again, I'd like to remind everyone that. Try to keep this to three minutes. We've got a handful of folks who've signed up today.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ron Crouch. I live at twenty-nine oh-one West County Road seven hundred north in Delaware County. Um, I moved here from Grant County. I lived in Grant County for twenty-five years and I just moved here four months ago. I'm, I'm a businessman here in Muncie as well. I have twenty-two employees. We're a union company and, um. I, I, I moved to this area very recently. On the ninety-third day of living in our new home, that we invested everything we had in, everything. I received a le- letter from National Grids, starting the conversation with hello neighbor. Um, they're not my neighbor. They're somebody that is. Been approved. To have drones flying over the top of my house. Every, all the surveying, going all over my property of eighteen acres. Nobody from the county notified me. Nobody told me nothing about this. There was absolutely zero transparency. Letters, notices, absolutely nothing that this was going to happen to me. This past, uh, Friday, I had a realtor at my house to appraise my house. Because I think I should put it up for sale due to the solar project that I feel Delaware County government has given the green light. I don't know where, why I would move anywhere in Delaware County right now after I sell it. Where's the next zone that's going to have solar brought to it? We have fourteen hundred acres roughly in the Rotten area they're wanting to put solar in. Where's the next three zones, two or three zones of fourteen hundred acres? I right now don't know why anybody would want to buy or build a home in Delaware County. Because we're not being informed of anything. These companies are coming in and they are monsters. They are giants. And the main reason I came here is because I spoke to one of the farmers that signed on last night. I had a long conversation with him and I told him I forgive him because I am a forgiving person. And he said, Ron, I think, I think I've done the wrong thing. Our county has allowed these, these giants to come in. Speak to these farmers and sell them and promise them the moon and do everything with no protection whatsoever. I challenged to find out, does one government official in Delaware County? Have any idea of what they're saying to these farmers to get them to sign on? What are they promising? Is that being monitored? Does that have anything? We have brought a giant into Delaware County. And David reached into his bag and grabbed a stone and he slung it. And he struck the Philistine and he fell to the ground. We need a David right away. Thank you.
All right, next up we have Melinda Crouch. Are you going to take her time? Okay.
Yeah, sorry about that.
All right.
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Melinda Crouch and I'm his better half. Um, so I am opposed as well. I live at twenty-nine oh-one West, um, County Road seven hundredth. North in Muncie and we just bought our home. We just bought our home a few months ago. And we moved from our home of twenty-five years. Where we raised our kids and in Greg County. And then we were not notified whatsoever about the plans of the solar farm coming around us. And it will be wrapped all around us and. So it's disheartening, to say the least. I have something that a friend of mine, you know, wanted me to share because she's. She knows a lot, a lot more about this, so. I'm not a speaker. Hey, so. You are elected by the people as the fiscal governing body and to be a watch and a check balance. For the Board of Commissioners. If you are not aware of all the negative financial impacts from solar. You need to get educated soon. First, numerous real estate studies that are peer reviewed by universities, by experts in their field. Show negative impacts to home values up to three miles. Those of us that are engulfed and surrounded will have major devastation. Property taxes is the lifeline to the county to pay for expenses. Given the vast size of these solar plants, over two hundred homes or more could be impacted. On top of that, if you are not aware of the lawsuit that is going on in Madison County, you should be. An attorney advised Madison County that if the project gets sold to a governmentally owned public utility, that they become tax exempt. Everyone that is pro-solar in this county thinks we are going to get millions off of the revenue. But this may, may not be the case. When the developers first apply here. They are nothing more than an LLC. And if approved, they immediately go to the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission to become a public utility. Once that happens, then all control at the local level is lost. Attorneys in Madison County have advised that public utilities are governed by the state and federal levels. And when the project is sold, the assessed values will decrease and be reset. And again, if sold to a governmentally owned public utility, they are tax exempt and there is nothing this county can do about it. There are many reasons on why Madison County changed their mind about Lone Oak Solar and is now trying to stop it.
Minute mark.
Thank you.
All right, up next is Autumn Grismore.
Um, good morning. My name is Autumn Grismore. I have lived in Hamilton Township for eighteen years. I currently live. In the Country Village, Creekwood area. And we also received the notification, um, dated August fifth mailed to us about our. Wonderful area being engulfed with, um, a utility sized, um, solar farm. Um, I guess I want to lead with kind of taking it, um, from our solar ordinance. Um, if you read about what's happening, not only in the state of Indiana with other counties, but you go to our neighboring states of Ohio and Illinois. Um, the ones that have approved it are constantly fluidly looking at their ordinances and keeping them up to date on what's happening with these, um, companies. These companies, um, come in, um, with the information that they're giving us that is only being studied by their side. Uh, we have information that is coming from third parties, um, that we are reading and we are educating ourselves on that, that. Um, honestly is very disturbing on what's actually happening on the ground to the residents, the health. The safety, the welfare of the people who are living around these things and what is actually happening, not just the information that's coming from these big corporations. So I guess my plea would be, um, not only the, um, we just need to enact some things in our ordinances that makes sure that we are protecting first and foremost. The residents of Delaware County. Um, and honestly, that's, that's kind of where I want to leave it. So thank you so much for allowing us to speak. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and to voice what, um, my concerns. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
One comment, bear in mind that the solar ordinance is adopted by the commissioners. The council doesn't play any role in that.
All right, up next is Mike Johnson.
Yes, thank you, um, uh, Ms. Piper. Will you, uh, let me know when I have thirty seconds left or somebody who's keeping time? Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Uh, Mike Johnson, I live at one-one-seven-zero-one, North County Road two hundred west, Muncie. Um, I'm sad. Uh, my wife and I, um. Bought this property eight years ago. This was going to be it here. We've put a lot of money in it. We love it. We got a beautiful forest. We got a two acre flower meadow. And now we wake up every morning with that pit in our stomach. It's gone. When I look out my front door and I want to see solar panels. Um, it's just, it's just, it's just heartbreaking. Our property value, you know, as much money as we have invested in this, several hundred thousand. But how much we gonna lose? But we don't want to move. The, the, the solution is not to move. The solution is to fight this back and please do not take this path. With these solar companies. We look at our place as like our own little national park. The grandkids come out and play. We enjoy the serenity. I enjoy hearing the chickens crow down at the end of the road. Can you imagine what's going to happen when they start this construction process? This, this is going to be devastating. Devastating to my neighbors, devastating to you and devastating to this county. And furthermore, it's going to be devastating to this state. I know that my neighbors and the people that are around us were well organized. We're well organized. And we're ready to fight. This will be nothing but blight. That's what it'll be, is blight. When you look at and you see all this, it'll be blight. They'll say they're going to take care of it. They say it's going to be good. They. They'll say they're going to take care of it, they say it's going to be good, they say they're going to plant flowers. Are you kidding me? That, that's not going to happen. And in closing, I mentioned this at the last meeting I was at here. If everybody would please just turn around and look at that Delaware County seal up there, that is Indiana. That is Delaware County. Farm fields, here's a corn, a plow, a beautiful sky. And I just want us to remain that way. This is pristine farm ground and a pristine area, let's keep it this way. This will create blight like we've never seen before. Thank you.
All right, up next is Mallory P.
Hello, my name is Mallory, I live in Yorktown. I am here today to voice my opposition of all the industrial solar that is trying to take over our farmland in Indiana. Delaware County right now is being targeted for this kind of development. None of this will benefit the county or the citizens. You were all lied to originally whenever they tried to come to Gaston. Now you are afraid of setting a bad precedent. Why aren't you afraid of what your constituents will think of you for not standing up for them? Why are corporations held higher than the citizens in this county? We deserve better and now is your chance to show you stand for us. Mocal and Kent showed up to a meeting that was in opposition of these new industrial solar farms and all I heard were excuses. We need a moratorium against any present or future solar farms from coming to Delaware County indefinitely. Make a strong statement by not allowing any solar farms in this county. You are so quickly to give tax abatements to these corporations yet we are one of the poorest counties in Indiana. Those were Mocal's words. Maybe if you stop doing this and let the corporations come that want to enrich our community on their own dollar and not ours, then we want to be in this situation financially. It doesn't take a genius to figure this out, just common sense. I'm putting this county council on notice that we, the people, will not sit idly by. The people will fight you for this, for, will fight you on this even if you won't do that for us. It is time for you all to be on the right side of history, either you are with us or against us. If you are against us, I hope you enjoy your last term as a councilperson. You wouldn't want this across the street from you or next door to your home and we don't either. Protect the farmland in Delaware County. This will ruin the quality of life for citizens and create blight in the county. And on top of that, the fire deputy showed up and said they are in no way prepared to handle anything that would go wrong with this. And that's all that I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next up is Janet Gernard.
Gernand.
Gernand, sorry.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Janet Gernand and I'm a constituent residing in Mount Pleasant Township. I come to you today not only as a concerned citizen, but as a mother and grandmother who is extremely concerned for my children and grandchildren's future food source, health and welfare when it comes to installing large industrial scale solar power plants on prime agricultural farm ground in Delaware County. According to the American Farmland Trust study entitled Farms Under Threat, we permanently, we permanently lose one hundred and seventy-five acres every hour in America due to urban sprawl. Between nineteen ninety-two and two thousand and twelve, we lost thirty-three million acres. And of those, eleven million were prime acres. Prime farmland is the best land in the nation. There are only three states with over fifty percent of their land designated as prime farmland and Indiana is one of them. Also, out of ninety-two counties in Indiana, there are only twelve counties that have over ninety percent of their land designated as prime farmland and Delaware County is one of them. These twelve counties should never have large industrial solar power plants on any of their farmland. Also, are you aware that Madison County is the only county that was able to have an impact study performed by Professor Stephen Miller of Michigan State University? Professor Miller is an agricultural economist who has performed several studies for concerned citizens in Michigan of what happens when you take a certain amount of farmland out of agricultural production. It's important to understand that tax revenue promised to our county by solar developers is not new money. It is, it only displaces an already existent income known as Indiana agriculture. Madison County is the only county in our state that has had this study performed and all you need to do is read it, so please do so. And I would be happy to get that information to you. According to Professor Miller, taking one thousand eight hundred and seventy acres out of production from Madison County's prime farmland will result in a loss of over two point three million dollars each year. Over the life of the project of thirty-five years, that's a loss of over eighty-two million dollars. And Lone Oak Solar promised Madison County twenty-four million in tax revenue. This is extremely concerning because most people do not understand the major impact that agriculture has on Indiana's economy. I'm asking that this council please recommend to the Board of Commissioners a moratorium until we can do our own independent impact study and start studying the other side of this very important and serious issue. Our children and grandchildren's future food source depends on decisions that we're making today and in the days and months to come. We owe it to them along with future generations to do our due diligence in researching all sides of this issue. And I so much appreciate your time and attention in voicing my concerns, thank you.
Thank you.
You could, if you could send the Miller study to the email address on the agenda.
Okay, can I get, how do I get that?
That will get all, either a link to it or the actual study.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next is Christopher Bilbury.
Good morning. Most of you are probably wondering why the last several people have came here today and talked to you guys about the solar issue. You guys don't have an abatement before you. There are no issues currently that you guys are dealing with, with this. But the last couple speakers that talked hit upon a very important point and that's the moratorium. And obviously, that would be the job of the commissioners. But I want to talk to you guys today as a citizen of Delaware County, as a citizen of Hamilton Township, as someone who's been involved in politics since I've been eight years old, is probably one of the most important positions in government that I hold and that's the position of a citizen. And I, along with the rest of your constituents, are your employers. It's not like we have a half and half Republican Democrat council or commissioners. Hell, we don't even have a half and half government. You guys, the, the entire government, save for the prosecutor and a judge, are Republican. And generally speaking, the auditor and the president of this council sat in here month after month after month, but besides being the auditor and the president, they are the chair and the vice chair of the Republican Party. And I'm asking you guys as Republicans to do your jobs and hold the other elected officials accountable since you won't answer emails. Jessica, you refuse to answer emails, just refuse to answer emails, it's gross and disgusting. And until you're willing to do that, I propose that we come and take over your meetings from now until we vote your asses out or you step down.
Watch your language, please.
You watch your language, I'll watch mine.
Don't swear, but okay.
Okay, I don't care if you swear or not, you're not me. But until you're willing to do your job, we'll take over every meeting. We'll continue to stack the bodies in here and force you guys to do your jobs. When these people are saying they're fighting, listen, they are more put together than the Gaston people and the Gaston people were put together. We will run you people from office happily clapping, running you from office unless you're willing to do, you're worried about my language. Why don't you stop speaking? I'm speaking, this is my turn, you can speak after I'm done. You've interrupted me a couple times, I'll finish up.
Wrap up your thought, please.
Thank you. Here's the deal. You're worried about my language. Worry about your jobs. Worry about the duty that you have to the citizens that you are failing on. You're failing, you're, you're not good elected officials. I, I hope that you guys don't go home and think that you do a good job. You're failing the citizens, period.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else who didn't sign up that would like to speak?
Yeah, me.
Yes.
I just think you guys do a great job. I appreciate all, Tommy Humbert, Delaware County Highway Department. I appreciate you guys all. Every time I ever call, need something, I appreciate you guys reaching out to me, getting back with me. I appreciate every one of you. But we just got to all work together to be stronger and, and, and I see that happening. And I said something to Matt the other day about it and, and it's, it's showing. So I appreciate every single one of you, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, hearing that, we'll move on to comments from council. Do we have any comments from council?
Well, I do. So there's a couple things that I wanted to address. Some of what I was going to say anyway and then others from, from the content of the council meeting that's went on. So first thing I want to say is, this has been a long meeting and I appreciate each and every one of you come up here, probably took the day off and sit up here and voiced your opinion and you're right, we do not have no abatements before this council. I've not been aware of any that's been presented to this council. I've pledged that, obviously, I'm against solar and that any abatement comes our way, I will do my part to vote it down and kill it and hopefully convince everyone else to join me in that battle, but that's not happened yet. But I wanted to thank you all for sitting through a long, boring meeting and waiting your turn to voice your, your opinion so your voice can be heard. You're right, this ain't the right meeting. But the people who are the ones who can make a difference are just a couple feet down the hall. And they watch these meetings and they hear. So I encourage you all to speak up wherever you can get your message out, wherever you can get your voices out. This meeting, commissioners meeting, doesn't matter, get your voice out. So I, I, I respect you for that. The other thing. President Piper, at the end of the meeting, did something very important. She said, and this is one of the things I'm very proud of for our particular council, we have this incorporated in our rules. And she said, is there anyone else here who hasn't yet spoken who wants to speak? And the reason we do that is because a lot of the people that come to these meetings, they don't know the process. They don't know there's a sheet out front to sign up. Hell, they've never even been involved in a government meeting, let alone know that they need to sign up. So Ms. Gernand, I am going to apologize to you for you abruptly not being allowed to speak at the commissioners meeting last week. You waited through the meeting just like everybody else did. Fortunately, you didn't sign your name up, which I think shouldn't matter it anyway. So I'm sorry you didn't get to speak and I'm glad you got an opportunity to put your opposition on the record today. I would encourage any county government that does meetings to follow our model and give everyone an opportunity to speak. Whether, and I'm glad that President Piper, you know, it's been a long meeting, it could have been easy to say you guys are saying the same things, let's, let's move on with it. But I'm glad that this council has allowed everyone the opportunity to do that and I hope everyone follows that model. The other thing I was going to say, you know, it's easy when we're talking about ten thousand dollars here and ten thousand dollars there. It, it's really a drop in the bucket compared to some of the other expenses. But I know citizens who are barely getting by with their grocery bill, their tax bill, and to them, ten thousand dollars is still a lot of money. So I take it very seriously when we can save ten thousand dollars for, for things that may make our lives as employees or officials easier. And I challenge everybody in the, in the, as a public servant and in local government to just keep that in mind. It's not about making our jobs or lives easier, it's about managing the money of the citizens and doing it in a proper and efficient way. And if we can save ten thousand dollars, then let's save ten thousand dollars. A couple of things we did today were just upgrades, more convenience. And if I was a citizen and sit out there, I'd be doing the math, adding it up, you know, it adds up. Last thing I was going to say, this is just an opinion piece and I, I wasn't going to bring it up, but it come up a couple times, you know, a lot of our expenses that we get are related to the court system, right? We got to operate a court system, we got to operate a legal system, it's just part of government, right? And we have an excellent prosecutor, probably one of the best in the state, you know? He goes, he's not one of those type of prosecutors that assault on crime and we're all thankful for that. They've made a, a, a position that they're going to lead the state in prosecuting people who who deal when someone else passes away. And I'm just, I'm going to share my, my, my belief on that, I don't really support that, that much because, you know, I, I, not a lot of you guys know, probably half of my council members don't even know. I myself, I myself was an addict for five years. And, you know, it's easy to become one. You have a couple accidents, you get prescribed some medication, before you know it, you're addicted and life turns to shit, you know, but you try to fight your way out of it. And some of these people who are getting hemmed up in this, they're not big drug dealers. They're just a person who's gotten a bad spot. They're probably helping out who they think is their friend or other drug buddy. Next thing you know, they're up the river for forty years. So I can support cleaning up the streets and, and, you know, making sure that everybody's safe. But I really kind of have to object to that approach and it wasn't something I was going to talk about, but it come up on the record a couple times today and it's just not something I really believe in, I don't really think it's going after the right people we need to get, but that's all I have, thank you all for coming and I, I hope to see you guys share your objections more and I hope to join you in helping spread those objections. And I encourage you to continue to pressure the commissioners and I hope they change the ordinance and let's roll up the red carpet for corporate companies for industrial solar in Delaware County. And let's send the message that industrial solar in Delaware County is closed. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Relative to the Royerton project or any other solar projects, Colleen, have any of them applied pre-application or applications that you're aware of to date?
We, we have had introductory.
Colleen, do you mind going to the microphone, I'm sorry.
Colleen Swackhammer, Plan Commission. So we have had introductory meetings with several of the solar companies, but we have had no official pre-application meetings or anything like that on record. We have had no applications filed. The pre-app meeting does need to take place at least thirty days before an application is submitted and we have not had one of those.
Is there a public notice timeframe also? And does that happen first before the pre-application?
It can kind of coincide. The notice for, the requirement for the public notice is that within three months of applying, that the company at least reaches out and does an introductory. Here's our company, here's our intent, here's our intended project, so to speak. And then there will be more public notice and that will be the normal public notice that happens with a special use application because this will still need to go to the Plan Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals to be approved as a special use.
Thank you.
I have a question, please. So how do you reach out to the public if and when this process starts?
So.
I think, I think from what I'm hearing, a lot of people just didn't have any idea what was going on until it really was too late on the first go around. So I think everybody, or many of the people in this room would like to, to know what the process is so they can become involved as well as this could potentially progress.
Yeah, and honestly, there's no guidelines as far as along the development process of we are not even involved in that, our office is not even involved in that. So basically, it is left to these companies, if they want to do public outreach, if they want to, some of them are having like some informational sessions. So basically, it is left to these companies, if they want to do public outreach, if they wanna, some of them are having like some informational sessions.
But if they, I'm interrupting, I apologize. But if they come to you and are wanting to do something, the public has to give a notice, does it not by you, not by them?
If they are coming to submit an application, we give notice for the special use application.
And how do you do that, please?
So that is when the application is filed, we send a public notice, a letter from our office. And that goes out to everyone within three miles or two properties deep, whichever's greater. So
Not to the newspaper?
The, well, the notice of the meeting is in the newspaper as well. But that will not be until an application is filed for a special use case.
Haven't they already filed that application?
No.
No.
No. The ordinance is set in place, but the ordinance still says these facilities cannot happen unless they are granted a special use variance.
And so you're the first party, the Planning Commission is the first party involved in this process?
Yes, so that will go before the Plan Commission at one of their meetings. They are able to give a favorable or unfavorable recommendation to BZA. BZA is then the body that will make the decision of approved or not approved.
I know the individuals I've spoken to are frustrated that there's no contact information for the BZA members. And in talking to Bill Hughes, it's because they're quasi judicial board, is that correct?
Correct.
So it's illegal to lobby the BZA.
Any communication can come through our office. Any emails, phone calls, things that we get, we are keeping track of. That information will be made available to the committee members.
And that can become part of the record, that they make their decision based on that record?
Yes.
So any communication?
Yes, and then at those meetings, there is opportunity for public comment for or against any case that's on the agenda. But the normal Plan Commission, BZA, does not have an open public forum for general comments. It's just what they are making a decision on at that meeting.
The only agenda items?
Yes.
But they take the recommendation from the Planning Commission?
They get a recommendation from the Planning Commission that they can take into account however, however they want. They don't have to go along with that.
So the board makes the final decision? But there's no mechanism for a citizen to lobby them on how they want them to make that decision?
At the meeting?
Through us.
Through the Planning Commission.
At the meeting or through the Plan Commission?
It's based off your recommendation. Do they typically follow your recommendation?
We don't. Our office doesn't give the recommendation. The Plan Commission Board provides the recommendation because they're the voting board.
And they can be lobbied. The Planning Commission members can be lobbied.
I don't know on that.
Contacted, you could provide information to them individually, yes. And to your point, Ryan, special uses are, are pretty rare, so you, you can't say that they're, they commonly follow the recommendation of the Plan Commission or not. There don't have very many, I don't know.
And it works like, you called it a judicial body in essence. It's as if the prosecutor and defense both presented, and the judge makes the final decision, that's ultimately what the BZA is about. So I appreciate you, Colleen, coming up and answering that. I hope those in attendance probably got a little bit more information than they've received in some other meetings, just from that, so thank you.
Yeah, and one more thing, we do provide all that communication to them. Basically, what we call, we kind of do a case analysis for the board and present that to them, so we are presenting them with all the information that we've gathered, all the facts, how it relates to the ordinance. But once again, our office doesn't recommend.
So, and, and that's the key point, so thank you. And you don't have to answer this, but ultimately, you guys are making a recommendation based on what's in the ordinance and whether that project is going to follow what's in that.
Yes.
So the ordinance, the components of the ordinance ultimately are, are the factors.
The ordinance contains the five, there are five factors that the Board of Zoning Appeals takes into account. And anyone's interested should review those. And one final point, the board, decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals can be appealed to the local circuit court. But it's based on that record, the circuit court doesn't hear evidence fresh. They take the record that was made before the Board of Zoning Appeals and determine whether the board complied with, with law.
But again, they're basing it off of law and ordinance, not citizens' objections.
Except if you read the ordinance, the, the five standards very much depend on, on citizen input, in my opinion.
And Colleen's email address is on the Plan Commission website, the Board of Zoning website, and you can also find ordinance on the Plan Commission's website, I think is where I found it. There's a link to that PDF, so you can view it at any time. I know I've sent that off to a few folks too, so, yes.
Thanks, Colleen. I have one other comment.
Yep.
To Mr. Bilbury's point. Obviously, I adamantly disagree with his assessment of this council. I think that once what presented with the abatement components that we were presented with last year and the amount of work that we're trying to put in relative to avoiding these things from, from coming about in the future lends itself that everybody on this council has taken seriously the concerns that have been expressed and are working diligently to make sure that we're making the proper choices moving forward, so. And then to clarify one point relative to the two projects that did had come before this council in years past relative to abatements, they were under an economic development agreement, which also would pay $200,000 a year each project to the county, so a total of $2 million in each, in each case. That's different than the property tax components that we would not receive additional funds, that is correct. We would, we are at our max levy, there is no money to be had. The surrounding citizens could potentially have their property taxes lowered, but the county was not gonna be receiving any additional money other than what was built into those additional agreements. This current Royerton project does not have an economic development agreement. Has, I think, potentially approached our, our commissioners or economic development folks. They've, in essence, have not heard from them in, in almost a year, so we don't expect that to come to fruition here before us based on the timing that we've heard about in that previous, in the meeting last week. So I just implore everybody to continue to do what we mentioned in that meeting last week about, you know, setting up and organizing and communicating your concerns and, and doing just that. And I think I can speak for everybody when I say, you know, everyone here is taking that seriously.
Anyone else?
And please, please keep us informed. I think, I think you think we know more than we do. I have had no contact from National Grid, was that the name? I, I'd never heard that name before. I've had no contact from anyone representing them. So I, everything I know about it, I learned more about it today than I've known before, so please keep us informed.
Yeah.
I understand, but I, I'd never heard, I'd never heard of that company before. Thank you.
All right, so budget hearings start next week on Wednesday. We'll be here bright and early, that day typically is a full day. And then we'll pick back up on Thursday, we'll see where we stand, if we need to meet on
8:30.
8:30, yeah, there's a public hearing before, at least I think there should be. Is it on the agenda? I haven't even seen it, okay. And then I'll send out a message to everyone so we can figure out snacks, so we have things to eat. But otherwise, our next regular scheduled county council meeting is Tuesday, September 24th at 9:00 a.m. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Say it.
Motion by Dan, second by Eugene, roll call, please.
Mr. Flamigan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
Mr. Kent.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
All right, and we are adjourned. Thank you.